Good evening. I want to call to order this meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council for February 25, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Angler.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Here.
And Mayor Newman.
Here.
Thank you. We begin with a very happy event tonight honoring the championship Newbury Park High School Panthers. Oh, I'm sorry. But before that, there is something even more important. I ask that you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I will go over to the speaker's lectern for our first presentation. We have some champions in the house. I'm so happy to share with everyone a huge accomplishment that a team in our community has achieved. The 2024 Newbury Park High School Football Team had a historically successful season which has brought tremendous pride to our community. The Panthers are the 2024 CIF Division II Champions, marking their first CIF Championship since 1993 and the second in school history. The team had an undefeated regular season and claimed the Cineo Coast League title for the second year in a row. Five senior players have signed to play Division I football next year, reflecting the exceptional talent and coaching within the program. So I would like to welcome Newbury Park High School Athletic Director Ethan Gray. Come on up. Newbury Park High School Football Head Coach Joseph Smigel. And along with the Newbury Park High School Football Champions, up to the dais. Come on, don't be shy. Come on down. Come on down. I've got something for you and then we're all going to take a picture together. I didn't mention is Principal Lapierre here. Okay. All right. So I'm going to hand these to you to hand out. And on behalf of the council and your coach and all of us in the community, we're so proud of you. Congratulations, every one of you. And Coach, don't go anywhere. Before we come up and take a picture with the council, I wonder if you'd care to say a few words.
Okay. I might be on the spot. First of all, thank you to our mayor and our council for honoring this historic team. Thank you to the community for all the support they've given us. It's been tremendous. I want to thank our wonderful coaching staff. I want to thank the parents of these great young men. And finally, I want to thank these young men who, you know, football is not easy. It takes a lot of commitment, takes a lot of accountability, and being able to be coached hard, getting knocked down, picking yourself up, and doing the things that really correlate to life is so special. And to be able to come together as a team and have great culture and want to do it together and want to win for the guy next to you is a testament to these young men. I couldn't be more proud to coach them and I wouldn't want to coach anybody else in the country. So thank you, guys, and congratulations for all that you've done. Don't ever forget this, and as you get older, these are guys that you'll never forget. Great day to be a Panther.
Thank you so much, Coach. You know, we're all very fortunate to have a great athletic program with the Panthers. You breed champions and you breed a lot of pride in the community. We're all very, very proud of you. So well done. And now I'm going to ask that you all come up and let's take a picture with my colleagues on the council. And you guys need them all the way in. There you go. Six-six in any direction. Thank you. Congratulations. Champions in our midst. Okay. And last but certainly not least, we have our final presentation of the evening. I would like to introduce Natasha Buren from the library. And apologies if I butchered your name there. And Natasha's going to tell us about the library's One City, One Book selection for the year. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Natasha Buren, a public services librarian at the Thousand Oaks Library and committee chair for Thousand Oaks Reads One City, One Book. I am pleased to be here tonight to announce the 2025 title. If you're unfamiliar with One City, One Book, or OCOB, it is a citywide literary event that encourages community members to collectively read and discuss a selected book. One City, One Book is a testament to the belief that literature has the unique ability to build connections, spark meaningful conversations, and enrich our community. This annual program not only reinforces the library as a vibrant hub for cultural enrichment and community connection, but also serves as a celebration of the power of storytelling to inspire and foster a shared sense of belonging. Just within the last two years, OCOB-related events have drawn over 3,000 participants, and we're excited to continue to serve our community through this program. I am pleased to announce that Symphony of Secrets by Brendan Slocombe has been selected as our 2025 title. It's a gripping page turner following the story of music professor Bern Hendricks, who is asked to authenticate a newly discovered piece from a famed 20th-century composer. When he uncovers clues that indicate that the composer may have had help creating his most successful work, it makes him a target of a powerful organization who will stop at nothing to keep his secrets hidden. We invite you to kick off this year's One City, One Book with a free jazz concert at the Grant R. Brimhall Library on Saturday, March 22, featuring Gordon Goodwin's Little Fat Band. In the following weeks, workshops, concerts, and programs inspired by the book will continue, culminating with An Afternoon with Brendan Slocombe on Sunday, April 27, upstairs at the Fred Cavley Theater with a Q&amp;A session and book signing to follow. Books are available in paperback, large print, ebook, and e-audio book, and will be available to borrow starting tomorrow at both libraries. This event is free. Seating is available on first-come, first-served basis, and for more information, you can visit tolibrary.org or give us a call at the library. Through One City, One Book, we aim to bring together diverse voices and viewpoints in a thoughtful exchange of ideas. A guiding principle that drives this program is the belief that when we open a book together, we close it in greater harmony. The Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library have been supporting this event for 17 years, and we are very thankful for their generous support. With appreciation, I would like to leave a copy of Symphony of Secrets with each of you and invite all of the community to participate in 2025's One City, One Book program. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So a book that's a thriller about music is my kind of thing, and I look forward to reading it, and I hope everyone in the community will as well. My thanks to everyone at the library and to all the Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library for doing such wonderful things in our community. Thank you again. We move now to public comments. Madam Clerk.
This is the time and place for public comments. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Six individuals have requested to speak in pursuit to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. I'll ask, I'll give the names of each speaker and the next two after that, and for the people who are on deck, as it were, I'll ask that you come down to these two chairs behind the lectern so you'll be ready to go when it's your turn. So we begin with Rick Erickson, followed by William Maple, and then John. Mr. Erickson, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Rick Erickson. I'm a member of the Scandinavian Center at Cal Lutheran University here in Thousand Oaks, and I'm a Thousand Oaks resident. We'd like to invite the public to our 51st Scandinavian Festival on the Cal Lutheran Campus Saturday and Sunday, April 5 and 6. We expect approximately 6,000 visitors to enjoy our food, music, culture, kids, crafts, events, and some friendly Vikings. For more information, check out scandinavianfest.org, which is on this passout here, and thank you for including us in your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Next, we will hear from William Maple, then John, then Dylan Bus. Good evening.
Hello, William Maple, resident of Newbury Park, members of the council, Mayor Newman. There's an old saying that history repeats itself, and this seems to be true when it comes to the tale of our two city halls. In the early 90s, there was quite an effort to sell the old city hall to provide monies for the new one. Thirty years later, this may be happening again. I heard rumors that the park service lease was not renewed, and a possible sale of the entire site may be in the planning. This might or might not be true, but the latest general plan indicates commercial town development for a majority of the areas surrounding the landmark buildings. There's also in the corner an area that's marked for mixed use in the north corner. Oddly, the general plan maps don't appear to show or call out the community's landmark in the center of this proposed zoning. Amending the landmark gives an incomplete representation of the property and therefore a false foundation for any future planning. For those who are new to the council or simply do not know, you are essentially our Cultural Heritage Board. An ordinance in 1972 assigned you the duties to promote the economic and general welfare of the city by preserving, protecting items that have special historical, aesthetic character or public interest. What could possibly fulfill your heritage responsibility more than preserving the landmark civic center and surrounding natural landscape, especially as we celebrate our 60th anniversary of Thousand Oaks this year? Mrs. Jants, that is Larry's grandmother, donated the land for public use not to be resold for profit. Then 154 architects competed from across the nation to design our unique civic center. So many submittals were received that the entire Thousand Oaks gem was filled with the competition boards. The final best design criteria in that it met an economic limitation, it had low impact on the surrounding landscape, and it preserved a majority of the property as natural landscape by the unique solution of parking on the roof. It would be the antithesis of the Heritage Board ordinance, the winning design in Sequa to develop the landmark's unique site and vista. I submitted some materials for reference, and I thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, Mr. Maple. We hear next from John, followed by Dylan Bus, followed by... We hear next from John, followed by Dylan Bus, followed by Nelson Bus. John, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. How is everybody? Good? Good. Okay. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Constitution of the United States. We all took an oath to uphold and protect it, defend it. But I have a feeling that some of you are going to vote on something tonight that will violate it. We pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The issue that I'm talking about is on the agenda. It's regarding the accessory dwelling units, ADUs. And it's, I've talked about this about five times to all of you. Well, not all of you. Ms. Gutierrez, you're new. Welcome to the council.
John, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'll hold your time here, but this public comment period is for items that are not on the agenda. We have you as speaking in the ADU part as well. If you have comments about something not on the agenda, this is a great time to offer those.
I understand. Yeah, you're right.
But...
I apologize.
But we can come back to the ADU issue.
Yeah, I won't, I won't talk specifically about the ADUs right now.
Okay.
But I do, but I, and I thank you for correcting me. You are, you are correct, and I appreciate that.
Part of the oath is upholding the Brown Act?
Yeah, yeah, and I don't want to waste time duplicating and repeating.
Okay, so I'll resume your time now.
Okay, thank you. Well, can I continue?
Please.
Okay, thank you. All right. So the Constitution. You know, like I said, we took an oath to uphold it. And the state, they push down laws that we, they ask us to adopt, and it happens on all different kinds of issues. And they say things like, if you don't follow this law, you won't get any funding in Area X or Y. Or they say they might, you know, we might get sued. But if it's a constitutional issue that they're saying that about, and we're telling them, hey, we can't follow that law because it's unconstitutional, then they would have a hard time winning that lawsuit. And if we're actually protecting the Constitution and doing what's right, we might get more federal money because it's a, you know, federal document than we would if we were to not do the right thing and just buckle down, you know, just kind of give up and throw in the towel and then not push back against the state. So I really, I really want you guys to think about that and consider, in issues like that, there are many, there are many laws and, you know, Senate bills and Assembly bills. But if we, if they're pushing an unconstitutional issue, and I'll explain that later in more detail, but if they're pushing an unconstitutional issue and we push back against it, it's like, okay, when tyranny becomes law, rebellion is duty for those who take the oath. Anyway, God bless you. God bless you guys. I love you.
Thank you, John. We hear next from Dylan Bus, followed by Nelson Bus, followed by Kenneth Saul. Dylan, good evening.
Good evening, and I'm going to start my, Dear Mr. Mayor and City Council staff, yesterday when I was with my dad and my dog coming home from school, we came across a white Tesla SUV in the crosswalk. My dog was on a leash, so she was a few inches in front of me. The Tesla was going too fast, so it almost hit us. It was basically arm-length away from us. Luckily, everyone was okay, and if we were even a second earlier, my dog would have been hurt. My solution is a four-way stop sign, speed bumps, cops from school, from ending school hours, and crossing guard, in a crossing guards are a good solution. Thank you for listening and taking my suggestion.
Thank you, Dylan. What, what intersection was this?
This was in, this was next to Norman Avenue and Warwick.
Mm-hmm.
On the four-way.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your speaking. Next up, we have Nelson Bus, followed by Kenneth Saul. Mr. Bus, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. I've come to you today because I have concerns about the property of 401 and 403 Hillcrest Drive, the site of our city government from 1973 to 1988. It sat empty for a decade once after concerns about asbestos and water leaks led to a temporary evacuation of city staff, which became permanent after the completion of the Civic Arts Plaza. The city manager and council of that era considered selling it to actually help fund build this building. And the community rose up, and the property would spend the next quarter of a century as the home of CRPD, National Park Service, and a facility they run programs out of, including the Children's Theater. Full disclosure, my children participate in those theater programs. I've heard rumors over the last year that history may be repeating itself. National Park Service departure has left a vacancy that I have not seen any attempts at filling, and CRPD added a line item to their last meeting agenda noting that there is a possibility that their current lease will not be renewed. When the general plan was in progress, I asked on multiple occasions where the elements that have historically driven people to settle in the Cano Valley would exist. Multi-story residential units don't have yards. Pocket parks, though wonderful, are little match for the massive neighborhood parks, trail space, and recreational amenities that residents of all ages and income levels enjoy today. I am well aware that public land occasionally needs to be sacrificed for a greater benefit, but I have witnessed our public agencies make questionable decisions more than once in my 36 years in the city. I've heard a great deal about $100 million project that will redevelop the Civic Arts Plaza, finally creating a downtown for the city, but I would like to hear more about what we're doing on Hillcrest between Moore Park and Lynn, and how the unspoiled public lands and existing buildings can be used to enhance the quality of life for the existing and potentially future residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, Dr. Kenneth Saul. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kenneth Saul. I'm a pediatrician in Thousand Oaks, and I just wanted to talk to everybody about, make sure everyone's aware that the pediatric unit at Las Robles Hospital is planning to close July 1st, and I think this is a grave mistake, and I just wanted you all aware of it. I know you have no jurisdiction over what happens at Las Robles, but you all know people, and you're part of this community. I've lived in this community for over 40 years. I love Thousand Oaks. I love Las Robles Hospital. Cano Valley is the best place to live. Family-friendly, great services, great place to raise a family with kids. And Las Robles, again, is a superb hospital with great leadership, and I've been here for over 40 years. I'm chief of Pediatrics now for the last four years. I've been on the Medical Executive Board for over 10 years, two terms as the Board of Trustees. I'm on the board of the Academy of Pediatrics, so I know what I'm talking about, that this is a big mistake. The issue is the pediatric ward is not always busy. I'd like to think because we take care of the kids so well, and, but it's also, you know, that it's not, doesn't make as much money as the adult floors, and it doesn't always have a high census. But there's more to life than just money. This is a great community, great for the kids, and Las Robles is a great hospital. I think even though the adult floors could make more money, I think there is more to it. HCA, their stock doubled since the pandemic. I think they can afford to have a unit that's not as profitable. The low census is a little issue, a little bit of an issue, but I think we can take care of it. But I want to tell you about the pediatric ward. Very unique. These are great nurses, the best nurses I've ever worked with, and I've worked with a lot, and they have hospitals, pediatric hospitals there that are great to work with and collaborate with, and that is a very unique thing in this day and age. And what's going to happen? The patients are going to have to be transferred. Just imagine, a kid, Sunday night, I get a call, eight-year-old with appendicitis, goes to the ER. They call in a five-star pediatric surgeon. He fixes the appendix, and they go home in a day, they're fine. Fast forward to July, that person has to be transferred. Transfers are very slow, very slow. That's going to be a good chance, a ruptured appendix, and sepsis, and all sorts of complications. Please don't let this happen. You know people, I know it's not your job. The bottom line is Cano Valley needs a pediatric ward, maybe a reduced size, but it needs one, and please help the children of the Cano Valley.
Thank you, Dr. Saul. We go now to the city manager for any response to public comments.
Yeah, just very briefly. Mayor Newman, thank you. We'll certainly make sure that we're highlighting Scandinavian Festival and appreciate that being, being shared. And I've asked Public Works Director Cliff Finley if he doesn't mind stepping out to chat with the kids about the intersection issue so we can make sure we have the specifics and that they can get that process done. It may be Akbar as well, I'm seeing there, pointing to each other, so. In regards to 401 Hillcrest, we have certainly heard from some confused and concerned residents after seeing a flyer saying that we were going to be selling open space. That's obviously not something that's happening, but in fact, we're adding hopefully four and a half acres of open space to our portfolio tonight on the, on the consent calendar. As the council is well aware, the future of 401-403 has been a topic of consideration for several years for a number of reasons. As one of the speakers mentioned, the only market rate tenant there, National Park Service, relocated their operations to a more modern, modern space. Today's commercial office market is an extreme challenge to rent, and the building is not in the best of condition. Our partner agency, CRPD, they do continue to occupy the city subsidized space on that property. They have a lease running through fall of 2027, so there's no lease cancellation or anything like that. And I want to reassure the public, CRPD's been very much at the table with us. Jim Friedel, their general manager, has been with us in, as we've contemplated, the future of this downtown facility here, which we envision having state-of-the-art office space available at a subsidized rate for CRPD. We also envision the arts-based rooms and the black box theater concept being modernized and incorporated into a future downtown. All that said, this is all years away, and there is no imminent decisions on anything being made. The city council did commission a number of appraisals last year in preparation for understanding the overall fiscal strategy for the downtown, and one of those was, was 401-403. The land use designation there matched the specific plan that was approved in the late 90s, and that's been codified in the general plan again over this most recent timeframe. The open space at the top, that will remain open space forever. So most important for the community to know, there, things are years away from, from any action on this. There's a lot of thoughtful policy decisions ahead, and simply put, there's no imminent action pending. There will be several downtown-related updates later this spring as the team of fiscal consultants bring you comprehensive funding strategies and incorporated a whole number of options attached there, and that will be part of that discussion as we move forward. As always, we're happy to sit down with anyone that has questions and provide additional answers. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Powers. We'll move now to the consent calendar, and I ask council members if they have any questions or items to poll. Not seeing any hands go up. So do we have any speakers on consent? Very good, and I'll move the consent calendar. Very good. Councilmember Adam has moved the consent calendar, and as soon as we can, let's vote.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, an earlier speaker was speaking about something on our consent calendar. Did he not put a card in for this item?
Different, different item.
I'm sorry, different item.
And that motion passes 5 to 0.
Very good. Thank you. And we move now to our public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Hearing Advertises Required by Law is open to Consider Agenda Item Number 10A, Accessory Dwelling Unit Regulations Update, MCA 2024-70005. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence. One person has presented a speaker card in pursuit to council standards. That speaker will be allowed five minutes. The yellow light displays when there's one minute remaining.
Very good. And presenting for staff tonight is Senior Planner Justine Kendall. Good evening, Ms. Kendall.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. The item before you this evening is to amend Title IX, Chapter IV of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code by updating the definition section, the permitted use matrix, and various sections of Article 45, the ADU ordinance article, in order to comply with new state laws, which came into effect January 1 of this year, as well as make minor changes for clarity. The city's ADU ordinance was most recently updated by city council in October of 2024. However, Assembly Bill or AB 2533 and Senate Bill or SB 1211, again, effective January 1 of this year, further amended state accessory dwelling unit or ADU law. The new and clarified regulations have been incorporated into the proposed ordinance update. AB 2533 does not explicitly mandate changes to local zoning codes. Rather, it primarily focuses on information dissemination and requiring that local agencies update their ordinances to comply with updated state regulations related to the legalization of unpermitted ADUs if necessary. As the city's existing ordinance is already in compliance, this Assembly Bill did not lead to any of the proposed text changes before you this evening. However, for your information, the updated law does now state that local agencies cannot deny a permit to legalize an unpermitted ADU or junior ADU constructed before January 1, 2020, which is changed from the deadline of January 1, 2018. The property owner applying for a permit to legalize an unpermitted ADU or junior ADU shall not be required to pay certain fees or charges except where utility infrastructure is necessary to comply with Health and Safety Code. The local agency is prohibited from penalizing an applicant for having an unpermitted unit and requires local agencies, such as the city, to approve necessary permits to correct noncompliance with health and safety standards. Local agencies must provide information to the public about limits on local regulation, substandard building criteria, and pre-application inspections. This information is now being provided by the city at toaks.gov/ADU. And finally, upon receiving an application for a permit to legalize an unpermitted ADU or junior ADU, an inspector from the local agency may inspect the unit for compliance with health and safety standards and provide recommendations to comply with these standards. Again, the website where you can find the information related to ADUs as required by this law within the Thousand, within the city of Thousand Oaks, including the legally required disclosures, is toaks.gov/ADU. Moving on to Senate Bill 1211, that state law has been amended to prohibit replacement of parking when an uncovered parking space is demolished for or converted to an ADU, to add a definition of livable space, and to increase the number of detached ADUs for lots with an existing multifamily dwelling from two to eight, or equal to the number of existing units on the lot, whichever is less. To expand on that last change a little bit, previously, an existing multifamily dwelling could only have a maximum of two detached accessory dwelling units. Now, again, an existing multifamily development may request up to eight accessory dwelling units or the number of existing units, whichever is fewer. In other words, if a multifamily property has 20 units, they could theoretically get up to eight detached units. If the property has five units, they could only get five new detached ADUs. In addition, the proposed ordinance includes minor clarifications and updates that have come up since the ordinance was last adopted, including that per HCD clarification, local agencies are not required to allow ADUs or junior ADUs within trailer park developments. Text allowing ADUs in those zones is proposed to be removed. This ordinance removes texts that contradict state law, which allows... This ordinance removes texts that contradict state law, which allows up to 150 square feet to accommodate ingress and egress for certain types of ADUs. It removes a design standard related to windows, which was not considered objective, removes repetitive text and changes the name of state exemption ADUs. That, that section is now named state mandated ADUs. That last, last change was incorporated into the ordinance after the planning commission heard this item last month and is recommended by staff to reduce some confusion about the process for permitting these types of ADUs. The general plan includes goals and policies that support the promotion of ADUs in the city, including goal LU-3 of the land use element, policies 3.1 and 3.2, and goal 1 of the 2021, 2029 housing element. The proposed updates to the ADU ordinance address inconsistencies between the city's local ADU, junior ADU development standards and the amended state laws. Moreover, updating the ADU ordinance is essential for maintaining the city's housing element certification with the California Department of Housing and Community Development. It is staff's recommendation to find that the update of the city's ADU regulations is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and to read and title only. Further reading be waived and if no objection, introduce an ordinance approving municipal code amendment or MCA 2024-70005, amending Chapter Four of Title IX of the Thousand Oaks Municipal, Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. I, as well as other city staff, are available for questions and clarification.
Thank you. And I should mention that in addition to Ms. Kendall, we've got our community development director Kelvin Parker, planning division manager Christian Rice and attorney Noel Duran, all, all available to answer questions. Are there, are there questions of staff? Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I understand one thing on this, about these single family home, existing homes, right? And I think right now, if you have a single family home, you can put in up to two ADUs, right? Either it could be a freestanding one, it could be one within your garage, whatever it happens to be, it's two. So how'd we get to eight?
That's for, the, the eight is only for multifamily properties, just multifamily developments. So it would be in a multifamily zone, which is different than a single family zone.
Multifamily meaning apartments?
Right, condos, right.
Oh, so more commercial?
Yeah, a larger scale development.
I see. So if you have an apartment complex with 50 units, they could have eight ADUs attached somewhere versus two.
Right, they could use another part of their property and.
So that's it, just eight?
Yep, that's the highest number or however many units they have. So if they, if it's a smaller apartment complex, let's say they only have six units, they could only add six.
I see, but max eight?
Max eight for anyone.
So even if you had 300 apartments, eight?
Yep, you got it.
Okay, I was a little mixed up on single family home versus multifamily. And the multifamily I get now, that would be more commercial. All right, good. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along that same lines, I, when I was reading through this and understanding what we're looking at in the multi-resident residential zoning, where do you see this type of activity occurring? Is this going to be a, a current, I mean, a very common thing? Or does it take a lot of spare land? Kind of give me a, a scale of what we're looking at here.
I don't know that we've received any applications or, or very many applications for this type of development as the, the law's, you know, recently been in effect. But it would require some amount of spare space to add up to that number of detached units. They, it would have to be, you know, using an underutilized area. We don't have a good read on exactly how many that would be, but I don't know that it would be very many.
If I, if I might, Councilmember Engler, I'm in sort of tracking when the, when the bill was going through and what some of the bill's authors were, were stating. There's a lot of complexes that were built in the 70s and the 80s and other things. A lot of them were built with like coin laundry and other facilities that, that may not be utilized any longer. Rec rooms, other facilities, and I think at least the bill's authors intent was to try to find opportunities to better, more streamlined leverage that space. That's at least what I'd heard.
I asked a question because I'm thinking in my own mind, how many locations do we have in Thousand Oaks that would sort of fit that bill a little bit? I'm scratching, scratching my head as far as where these places might be. You said underutilized space. Does that include, say, an apartment house with, per our code, you know, parking amounts? Are parking lots considered underutilized space for the, for the purposes of ADUs?
Yes, they could use parking lot space for the purposes of building these detached units.
Thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. I'm glad Bob brought up parking. That's the only part that I, has my wheels kind of spinning as far as the impact on neighboring properties or, yeah. Maybe there's not a question. I'm just noodling. I apologize, but will that be taken into consideration before applications are approved? Kind of the, I'm sure we do that already, but now that there's a state law saying there isn't a requirement to kind of backfill those lost parking spaces and now we're adding additional, you know, renters potentially, will we as a city be taking that into consideration? Or how do we, how will we approach that?
Yeah, so currently state law allows us to require parking, adding parking spaces for additional units except in certain circumstances. And one of the circumstances that we're talking about is when we're, when we're replacing covered parking. So what, one of the changes is this evening is basically just to also add uncovered parking, right? So, so for years, we've been required to not replace covered parking. So the only change tonight is to add uncovered parking. But in principle, we always look at the required parking and if we can require an additional space, we will. But in some circumstances, we can't require replacement parking. Did that answer your question?
I think so.
Councilmember Engler.
Thank you for the rebound question. Appreciate it. In, in talking about it, I know one of our speakers has talked about this to us in the past. Constitutionally, and I'll turn to our attorneys for this. Federal law, federal constitution has a supremacy clause that federal law trumps, trumps state law. That's the same as in our state constitution, correct? So can you explain that a little bit better than I just clumsily put forward?
So, so you are correct. In particular with respect to local government, municipal corporations, the city is a municipal corporation. We derive our powers from the state. And so we talk a lot about when, you know, when we're, when you guys are considering ordinance is the concept of preemption. So for example, the city council cannot pass an ordinance regarding murder. Can't pass an ordinance regarding taxes, you know, and tax fraud because we're preempted by state law or federal law. So that concept applies in all different types of aspects. So in areas where the state government has not regulated, then cities are free to draft their own ordinances as long as they don't conflict with state law. Does that make sense? Is that, is that the question you're asking me?
Yes, it is. A little follow up though.
Okay.
So our zoning authority is the state supremacy clause now preempting our, some of our zoning authority.
Right, so the state legislature and the California constitution gives us powers, municipal powers. We have police powers under the constitution and we also have powers under the state planning and zoning law. The state planning and zoning law tells us that cities can pass ordinances to regulate land uses. So that's why we have a zoning code, because cities are allowed to pass ordinances saying that this piece of property will be commercial and this piece of property will be residential. That's state planning and zoning law that was adopted by the state legislature that authorizes cities to create these zoning codes.
And the state is able to limit or adjust our ability in those areas?
As long as they do not conflict with the federal constitution. So for example, the state can't pass laws that result in a federal violation of the Fifth Amendment, taking a property, for example.
Thank you. Councilmember Adam.
I don't know, maybe it's me, but I don't recall ever seeing any apartment complexes in Thousand Oaks with ADUs. Are there some that you're aware of?
We have one in process and there have been.
Oh, do we really?
A number, I believe, of multifamily ADUs that are within the existing building. So you would, you wouldn't see them from the street, but they're within, using, like the same address said.
Really?
Like a laundry facility that's no longer being used.
So we have one in, in the hopper, huh?
One with detached units.
Where are they putting it?
I don't, in the side yard.
In the parking lot?
No, in a, in a side yard.
In where?
In a side yard area.
Oh, okay. That just seems like it's not very commonplace at this point. Maybe it will become more so, I don't know, but I would think at this point be fairly unusual to have an apartment complex apply for an ADU. Would you, you would, you would agree with that?
Time will tell.
Considering we only have one.
So I, one of the areas that comes to mind for me frequently after going through the staff report, if you can think about the older apartment complex that's on Hampshire Road, just past where the new, oh, the old Kmart site is.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a gated apartment complex there, very large land mass wise and built in the 70s. And that facility, if built today, before you had state density bonus and all these other components, would be larger than it is today. And so that is the type of large land, type of location that I would anticipate that a corporate conglomerate that owns that is going to be looking for an opportunity to monetize additional units within their complex. And if we were going to see it, we'd probably see it in that type of utilization.
All right. I, I, I understand. So the, the likelihood may increase as this becomes a little more well-known among the commercial property owners, I suppose. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? So I've got four questions. I want to begin with a follow up of Councilmember Engler's line of questioning around the supremacy clause, but from a different angle. When we had our staff meeting yesterday, I asked the question, why are we here? Do we, do we really have a choice? Because as, as we did in the fall, there was another set of ADU revisions to state law. And at that time, staff told us, really because of the supremacy clause, when there's a variance between state law on the one hand and municipal law on the other, the, the state law has supremacy. So my first question is around that is, is that a correct reading? Or are we doing these revisions, having this hearing here tonight because we need to bring our municipal law into compliance with the state law? Is that, is that the basic reason for this hearing?
Yeah, I would say the majority of the changes that we're making this evening is because we're required to by state law.
All right, so coming back to my more basic question, why are we here? I don't really think, is there, realistically, is there an option of a no vote on this? Since voting no would put municipal law at variance with state law?
Yeah, I mean, certainly you could say no, but that would create a lot of different problems, right? I mean, if, and the, the easiest one to explain is, is that if our ADU ordinance is out of compliance with state law, then none of our ADU provisions would apply and people could apply for ADUs strictly based on the state law. And so we would lose the small amount of regulation that we have in place now.
Right, so this is a hypothetical, I realize, but if, for example, we said, no, we don't like that eight. Eight is a lot, even, even for a large multifamily complex. We, we would rather have it be four. And then some property owner would come back and sue the city and say, well, wait a minute, the state law says eight. I'm entitled to eight. We would lose that case, correct?
Correct.
Because of the supremacy of the state law? Okay, thank you. Second is there was an addendum to the supplemental issue to the agenda this afternoon. I don't know if council members have had time to read it, but we will hear from a public speaker in a few minutes. Ms. Nan Chu is here. We'll hear what she has to say, but my question is about, there were a set of several recommendations she had. And my question, without going through them point by point, some of them seem quite reasonable to me. And I'm wondering what latitude we have to adopt any or all of the suggestions she made, given the discussion we've just had about the supremacy clause.
Yeah, I've had, actually had an opportunity to, to read that email. And what I would say is that most of the recommendations that are in there are already covered by existing municipal code provisions, right? Most of those are covered by our nuisance abatement rules and our parking regulations. And so those are things that we can already address, not just for ADUs, but for any construction. The one item I would say doesn't fall into that category is a request that there be some kind of neighborhood hearing with regard to an ADU. And that one we cannot do because of state law, because we're required to review and approve or deny ministerially, which means that we can't hold a public hearing in approving or denying the project.
Right, so if we, if the state is now forbidding us to have a citywide hearing, we certainly couldn't have a neighborhood hearing.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. But there are, it sounds like for many of the other recommendations, there are existing mechanisms that would allow Ms. Chu's suggestions to be carried out, correct? Yeah, they already are, yeah, yeah. That's my question. Okay, moving on to Councilmember Adam's question about multifamily apartments. Is there a minimum size of a multifamily project that would qualify for these eight units? Is it two? Is it eight? Is it 10, 16? I'm just wondering what the threshold is to qualify for those eight.
I think state law, I, I can double check this, defines a multifamily development as three units or more.
So again.
But I can stop you though, it's not eight units. So you have to have eight units in order to get eight units. If you have less than eight units, you only get that number. So if you have three units, you only get three units. If you have four units, you get four units. So you have to have a minimum of eight units to get eight units.
Okay, but to Councilmember Adam's point about the eight, the number eight, it is conceivable an applicant can come in with an eight unit multifamily complex and then get an additional eight ADUs, correct?
That's right. Once it is existing, yeah, once.
Once the eight unit multifamily complex exists.
Is existing.
They could come back and then at some later date and say, hey, we want to add eight ADUs. The state law lets us do this.
That's right.
They just have to have land to do it.
And that would be ministerially approved.
Yes, it would be ministerially processed.
Max of eight, right, right. So if it's, if it's, if it's an eight unit, they can build up to eight ADUs. They can add up to eight ADUs. If it's a nine unit, if it's a 900 unit, they still get eight. That's the ceiling.
Yeah, detached, yeah.
Okay, and then my final question is, is about one of the two state laws you went through, AB 2533. This is essentially a form of amnesty for out of compliance. through, AB 2533. This is essentially a form of amnesty for out-of-compliance ADUs that are around now. Are we expecting an influx of applications from, from existing, owners of existing ADUs?
No, this type of amnesty has been around since the ADU laws were, started to be revised six or seven years ago now. So the landscape hasn't changed dramatically to encourage anybody to come forward. They wouldn't have had that encouragement earlier.
Okay, so that provision is not going to have a material impact on ADU production here?
No.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. This isn't a question, it doesn't really impact the vote tonight, but I would be curious to find out what amount of units qualify for additional ADUs. The reason why I say that five units and above is considered commercial and then four, three, and you know, your duplex, triplex is below. I would just be curious to find that out. So if you would mind looking into that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Taylor. Are there any other questions from council? Okay, we go now to public comment. They were. Very bright colleagues here. So we have two public speakers on this. First is John and then is Nan Chu. And I ask that you please come to the dials for your comments. And you've got up to five minutes each for your comments and questions. Good evening again.
Good evening again. Okay, so now I'm going to focus on the ADU municipal code, but not the whole thing. I'm not an ADU hater. I want to make that clear. I think ADUs are kind of cool. But what I like, what I really care about is the Constitution. So the supremacy, using that word, of the federal US Constitution, in Article 1, Section 10, it says, "No state shall make a law that impairs the obligation of contracts." Now, like I brought this up before, CCRs, covenants, conditions, restrictions that exist in most neighborhoods, including in HOAs, but also in neighborhoods that don't have HOAs. Those are contracts. So I don't want my contract that I have with my neighbors to be impaired or violated. And the US Constitution says that no state can do that with a law. Now, the state of California has Assembly Bill 670, where it specifically says, "In the case of ADUs, the ADU law supersedes CCRs." That's bad. So if we're voting for this stuff and we're not standing up against the state and saying, hey, this is not constitutional, if we just go and say, hey, yeah, we'll go ahead and pass this, we'll adopt it, it's wrong. It violates the Constitution. And when we took that oath to uphold the Constitution, and then we don't do that, we are violating that oath. And that, every time we add something to this code, it's impacting that. And, you know, my CCRs, codes, covenants, and restrictions say things like, you can have one dwelling on this property. The whole neighborhood says that. And that's, I think that's what most places say. It also says you cannot modify property lines. You can't split a lot. You can't merge lots. And now we've got SB 9 and SB 35, which do just that. So I'm not sure if any, there's anything out there that says that those SB 35 for lot merging and SB 9 lot splitting. I'm not sure if there's anything that says, hey, this supersedes CCRs. Do you guys know? Can I ask that question? I know this is public comment, but-
There will be a period for staff response.
Okay, just if you guys could answer that, I haven't looked-
We will respond to that.
Okay, yeah, I haven't researched that yet, but, but I'm waiting for it, if it doesn't exist already. Because they just keep crossing their toes over the line, over and over and over with every update. Anyway, it ultimately, it will make, you know, especially the lot merging, where you can build an apartment building, that's going to make it look like Sherman Way and Roscoe Boulevard out in the valley. It looks terrible. It's very crowded. Anyway, because that's what they did. They tore down a bunch of houses, merged lots, built apartment buildings. Anyway, I just want to focus on the CCRs, because that's specifically a constitutional issue that we're dealing with here. So I pray for you guys to make bold, courageous decisions and votes and uphold the oath that you took. I mean, in the future, when you go up for another election campaign, your opponent, who's ever running against you, could easily say, hey, look at all these things that you voted and violated the Constitution. I mean, maybe that'll help motivate you a little bit. But again, the, when the state says, hey, we're going to sue you if you don't follow, you know, you don't adopt this, we should push back against it if it's unconstitutional. And if we don't get the money, so what? We're following the US Constitution. The US government will probably appreciate that more. And your constituents will appreciate that more. And they will think you are an honorable person by doing that. That would be huge. Anyway, God bless you guys. And I hope this gets better.
Thank you, John. And we go now to Ms. Nan Chu. Good evening, Ms. Chu.
Good evening. My name is Nan Chu. This is the second time I appear here. And I'm so glad to hear your comments, John. One thing, I think your CCR probably requires a public hearing when you have a major improvement on the single-family house. This ADU stuff does not allow you to have any public hearing. In my recommendation, you know, after I've been spoken, you know, I spoke to you last year and also appearing in the planning committee, I didn't really feel what I tried hard as the first victim of a neighbor who has a very ambitious ADU plans went to any place. I come here not to work for myself. Things have gone through and I'm still in that phase, facing my neighbor's ADU construction. So what I did was I tried to be more productive. Instead of criticizing or trying to modify the current ADU requirements, I like to present my recommendation. It's totally voluntary, okay? I know that I wouldn't be in a place to reinforce any of these things. And Mayor Newman, your questions and your comments were very heartwarming to me. But I didn't hear that from any of the staff here, addressing any of my comments. All what they told me was that you got to write to the, to the councilman, you got to write to the alderman and state senator. Nobody responded. So now I'm coming here to present something. And when people go to the planning committee, apply for permit, hand this to them. It's up to them how much they want to do, about the parking, about the disturbance of the neighbor, about the limited resources and then public services. It's up to them. If they are selfish, they don't do anything. And I'm just worried about other people because I think my place is pretty much done. My neighbor has built ADU to occupy more than half of their property. Okay, I live as if I was a neighbor to Motel 6. Okay, you talk about the apartment buildings, building up to eight ADUs. I'm talking about single-family property in a cul-de-sac. So anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to voice this. And I'm going to have to deal with my neighbor, depending on the renters, depending on how they occupy, the, I think altogether, maybe six, up to six bedrooms and maybe even up to eight. And then I'm just hoping, in other parts of the city, let's not make that into San Fernando Valley neighborhood, in Sherman Oaks or in Roscoe Avenue or Street. Let's try to keep Thousand Oaks peaceful, beautiful, and embracing the nature. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much both for coming to speak tonight and for your suggested list of, of terms around ADU construction. Much appreciated. Not seeing any further public comments on this item, we go back to staff for additional comments.
Thank you. Yes, I just, I want to correct myself that for the purposes of creating an ADU, a structure with two or more attached dwellings on a single lot is considered a multifamily dwelling structure. Also, that multiple detached, single-unit dwellings on the same lot are not considered multifamily dwellings for the purposes of state ADU law. So I apologize for that error. And I do want to note here as well that the neighbor to Ms. Chu does have an open code enforcement case dealing with some of the nuisances that have been brought to our attention. We take this very seriously.
And I'll go ahead and field the question about CCNRs.
Please.
I think what everyone's referring to is California Civil Code 4751, which states that CCNRs can't effectively prohibit or unreasonably restrict the construction or use of an accessory dwelling unit or junior accessory dwelling unit on a lot zoned for single-family residential use. Right? And what I'll point out is that those are not city regulations, right? So that is not the city's fight. This issue is going on throughout the state. I'm aware of a matter in Carlsbad, California, where this issue is being discussed, whether it ends up in litigation and what the result of that is, I'm not sure. But we understand the issue. I think it's not fully settled yet. But for purposes of the city this evening, that's not really within our jurisdiction.
Very good. Thank you. Are councilmembers, are there additional questions of staff? Mayor Protam Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually just like to, I think you answered it, but I just want to get some clarification. When you mentioned if, and I think this was a question from the mayor, if we did nothing, our ADU policy would go out of compliance? And then if somebody went to build an ADU, would they go around us and just tap into basically the state regulation? Is that how it would work? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So our ordinance right now, we're complying with state law. And in state law, it provides cities some latitude to come up with objective standards for ADUs, right? If we're out of compliance with state law, that, that ability to have those objective standards, that all goes away. And any application for an ADU would be required to be processed just by what's in state law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of our speakers spoke about problems that she has been having with her neighbor. And I understand it's a code compliance issue going on now. My question is, when someone comes in with an application for an ADU, and it's something that I think we all agree is, you know, in the right place at the right time is a good thing. Do you also let those people know of the other codes that apply to them, such as nuisance codes or noise codes or all those types of things that perhaps would come up from a neighbor who now has an ADU next to him? Is that something you'd proactively give out? Or is it something that these people learn organically?
Thank you for the question. And it's something that we all take very seriously in terms of permit issuance. And we sympathize with residents' concerns, any resident, as it relates to temporary construction impacts. But this is something that is standardized in our building department with the issuance of permits, that identify what construction hours are, the days of operation, what can and cannot be done in terms of parameters of building within the city. So that's fairly typical and fairly standard in terms of permit issuance.
So many of the things that you said are already in place to help protect residents and neighbors, that that's information that you give out-
That is correct.
-to the applicant?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adam?
Yeah, thanks. Just a question for Ms. Noonan. So it's your, okay, if we decided to challenge this law and be out of compliance and we expended some taxpayer dollars to do so, what's the likely outcome to that?
You mean, would we win?
Yeah.
I think that we have a very small chance of winning. Remember, our powers are derived from the California Constitution, which sets forth very specifically that the cities have the right to create and enforce laws that don't, you know, that don't conflict with the general laws of the state. The state has passed these general laws regarding ADUs and we're required to comply with it, no different than other types of laws that the state, you know, the state, you know, can set the speed limit on the freeway. We don't have the right to say, nope, we'd rather go 85. You know, there's certain things that we don't get to, we don't get to challenge the state on.
Got it. So it could be a very expensive crusade with a very dubious outcome.
It would be very unlikely that we would succeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council member questions? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for council discussion or a motion. Councilmember Adam?
Sure. Yeah, well, good discussion, a lot of good questions, good answers from staff. I learned a lot about this that I didn't know already. I think that we have no choice but to comply with state law on this, whether we like it or not. You know, I've always had my misgivings about these ADUs. I sympathize with you, with your situation, ma'am, you know, to, because you're a single-family home. We're talking about commercial properties tonight, but it could be very intrusive to have a big ADU built right next door to you. I can completely empathize with that. But tonight, we're dealing with the commercial side and the state of California. And as you heard our city attorneys say, it's, you know, to fight this thing would be basically fruitless in this particular case. So, so I'm going to move that we, where are we? What is this one? 10A? Move 10A, we update our city ordinance to comply with state law.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there other comments? Councilmember Engler?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regrettably, I would agree with our, my colleague, Mr. Adams, Adam, that we are in a position where, and that's why I asked a question on preemption and supremacy, is that it appears that we are, we need to comply with state law. Are we opposed ADUs in general? No, I think it gives us a needed housing. There's things that I would do differently, I think, with ADUs. But it also gives us the ability to have a little more housing for folks. The, my recommendation would be that, just to make sure that when the, as you, as you mentioned, you already do, Mr. Parker, that that information goes out to perhaps encourage people who are taking that trip into an ADU to remember to be good neighbors and that there are ordinances that can help guide them in how to do that.
Thank you. Any other comments? I echo what my colleagues have said here. It is, we're not anti-ADU here. As a matter of fact, it's been by far the most common type of building activity for three years running. Eighty-plus percent of all building permits issued here in Thousand Oaks for the past three years have been for ADUs. It's not a huge number of units in absolute terms. It's maybe 200, 250, somewhere in there. But it is one of the kinds of buildings that are going on now. And we in city government have a challenge in that the state laws around ADUs are a bit of a moving target. And for the reasons that Ms. Noonan and Mr. Duran have enumerated, we need to have our laws comply with state laws. I don't think there's really a choice or a question around that. That's how the supremacy clause works. That's how the supremacy clause works. I also want to commend Ms. Chu for the list of suggestions she offered, and, and offer also my sympathy to the troubles you've had. I understand there's a code compliance case undergoing right now to, to get the builder into compliance with, with code. I am encouraged to hear that many of your suggestions actually are on the books today, that there are practices, that what you're asking is not only reasonable, but, but it's, it's what we require today. So, when a builder is out of variance with that, there is a mechanism, code compliance, to bring that, that developer into compliance, and I hope future developers will pay better heed to that. But, but again, I'm sympathetic to what you're going through, and I'm glad that you brought these very reasonable suggestions to us.
So, not seeing any other comments, I'll ask that we go ahead and vote.
That motion passes 5 to 0, and your ordinance title is Ordinance Amending the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code Relating to the Regulation of Accessory Dwelling Units (ADUs) and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units (JADUs) by updating Title IX, Chapter Four, Article Two, Section 9-4.202 (Definitions), Article 21, Section 9-4.2104 (Permitted Use Matrix Residential Zones) and Article 45, Section 9-4.4505 (Location and Number of ADUs), Section 9-4.4506 (Development Standards), Section 9-4.4507 (Objective Design Standards), Section 9-4.4508 (Parking) and Section 9-4.4513 (Statewide Exemption ADUs to Implement Recently Adopted State Law, MCA 2024-70005).
Bravo. We move next to department reports. We have two this evening. The first is Item 12A, and presenting this evening is our Finance Director, Jamie Boscarino. Also available for questions is Community Development Analyst, Lynn Oshida, and available remotely for questions is our Consultant, Kaiser Marston's Associate President, Kathy Head. Ms. Boscarino, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here tonight to present a request for an additional loan for Hillcrest Villas on behalf of Mini Mansions. So, a little bit of background about Hillcrest Villas. It opened in May 2013, so it was likely the last RDA project that the city was able to do in cooperation with Mini Mansions. Mini Mansions developed the project, and they also operate the project. It's a 60-unit mixed supportive affordable housing project, and approximately 30 of the residents that reside there receive supportive services, and it is comprised of very low and extremely low-income residents. So, that makes it a very expensive property to operate because of the mix of the low-income residents there and that fact that they're receiving supportive services. The existing organizational structure, Hillcrest Drive LP, is the limited partnership. Hillcrest Drive LLC, which is Mini Mansions, is the general partner on this project. US Bank is currently the limited partner, and then, as I mentioned, Mini Mansions is the property manager and the service provider. So, a little bit of funding background on the project. This was a $26 million project. Currently, we have hard debt through US Bank, and $1.1 million, that's come down to about $944,000. There were several soft debt issuances, which is residual receipts. The city had $7.1 million. We also had HCD home funds, Cal HFA MHSA funds, Federal Home Loan Bank funds, and the equity from US Bank was a capital contribution for $11.3 million, and the city also deferred some fees for just under $300,000. So, those were all the sources of funding for this project totaling the $26.1 million. So, the existing US Bank loan that I mentioned, there's about $944,000 still outstanding on that loan. Mini Mansions has remained current on debt service payments every year on that loan. The loan documents require a debt service coverage ratio of 1.2 to 1, and net income must be at least 120% higher than debt service. So, that's what the debt service coverage ratio is. Your net income on that project needs to be at least 120% higher than your debt service payments. The loan docs also required to maintain a debt service coverage ratio of 1.05 to 1 for two consecutive years, and if you don't do that, then that would result in an automatic default. So, Hillcrest Villas project has failed to meet that 1.05 to 1 DSCR for the past two consecutive years, and that did result in US Bank providing a notice of default to Mini Mansions this past fall. US Bank at that time gave Mini Mansions until January 30th of this year to resolve that. So, Mini Mansions reached out to the city back in fall after they received this notice of default from US Bank. This was the first notification from Mini Mansions of their failure to meet the requirements that are set forth in the loan documents and the subsequent default. They requested financial assistance from the city to pay off the existing US Bank loan. We had multiple discussions over the past several months since Mini Mansions first came to the city, talking about alternative funding scenarios, have they reached out to other agencies like Area Housing Authority, HCD, other banks? So, some of the challenges and why Mini Mansions is in this current situation on this project. Hillcrest Villas is in a high fire-risk area. You can see from the picture on there, that's Hillcrest Open Space. We all recall the Woolsey Fire. The Woolsey Fire burned all of that open space, so the project is right up where Woolsey Fire actually came. And because of that, and because of what's going on in the property insurance market right now, the, the insurance on the property has skyrocketed. They were paying less than $20,000 annually for insurance, and that has gone up to over $275,000 annually in just the past few years. US Bank, because of this, has required force-placed insurance coverage on the property, which also added additional costs every year to the project. As I mentioned, this is very low and extremely low income and has supportive services, so the rents are extremely restricted on this property, and Mini Mansions is not able to increase rents in order to make up that deficit. The supportive services that are provided to those extremely low-income residents are costly to provide, but they are a necessary component to these residents. And we're talking about, you look at our navigation center that we're getting close to opening, this type of property that has these supportive wraparound services is the exact type of property that those residents in a navigation center would transition into, into this permanent supportive housing project. So, that is extremely expensive for those services and that type of property to be provided to those residents. US Bank has been unwilling to waive the debt service coverage ratio requirements. I myself personally met with US Bank, had conversations with them. They are unable to waive this requirement and unwilling to do so. The project currently, I mentioned, our existing $7.1 million loan is residual receipts loan. Although we have received residuals, receipts payments in the past, we have not for the past several years, and in discussions with Mini Mansions, because of what's going on with the property insurance and with the revenue and the other expenses increasing, like electricity costs, it is unanticipated that we will receive residual receipts in the near future. So, the city, Mini Mansions, both met with US Bank in January, and we discussed options with US Bank on how we could move forward and resolve the situation. US Bank did agree in concept to extending that payoff deadline from January 30th to April 30th of this year, assuming the city would loan $500,000. Montecito Bank would loan $400,000, and Mini Mansions would fund that gap. So, $944,000 about, so Mini Mansions would come up with about $44,000 of their own funding in order to make the whole loan payment. HCD would also have to approve these loan agreements as well. So, I mentioned $500,000 from the city and $400,000 from Montecito Bank. In our discussions with Mini Mansions, Montecito Bank wanted to be in first position on their loan. Their loan would be a smaller amount than the city loan, plus the additional $7.1 million that the city has on the property already. Staff did not feel it was a prudent financial decision to agree to those terms, and so we told Mini Mansions to cut Montecito Bank out of the deal and just have the city increase its loan amount from 500,000 to 900,000, and that would be the request we would make of city council. The term would be 55 years from closing, would be a 3% simple interest payment, which is what we currently have on existing loan, and that's very standard with these type of affordability loans. The repayment would be paid from residual receipts, just like our existing one, and that's from our excess cash flow. If Hillcrest Villas goes through syndication in the future, the resulting cash from that deal would be required to be used to pay off this $900,000 loan. The position the city would be in on this additional loan would be to determine, we'll work with HCD to see if we can be in first position, but that would likely, we would likely be required to be behind the existing debt. Currently, HCD's $4.4 million is in first position, and then the city is in second position, once the US Bank loan is. Currently, US Bank is in first position, and HCD's second, and the city's third, but assuming payoff of the US Bank loan, HCD would then be in first, and city would be in second. So, we will work with HCD and see if they would be willing to place this new $900,000 loan in first position, but based on what HCD requires, it's unlikely that that will happen. So, the recommendations is authorize the city manager to execute the $900,000 loan agreement and documents with Mini Mansions, an additional budget appropriation and the amount of $900,000 from the city's general fund to pay for this, and then authorize the city manager to execute any necessary agreements with HCD or any other interested parties as part of this as well, and that this is not a project as defined under CEQA. And with that, myself, Lynn, Rick Schrader's here for Mini Mansions, and Kathy on Zoom, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boscarino. Councilmembers, questions? Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had a long and fruitful partnership with Mini Mansions. It's been a very good partnership, providing affordable housing for a lot of our most, our citizens who need the help the most, and we appreciate that. I understand that the insurance was really one of the things that really was the crux of the acute issue coming forward to us now, and that's been happening all over town, unfortunately. My, my question, it seems to me, and maybe I'm simplifying this too much, there was a income outflow issue that kind of brought this to, to the issue, to, to us tonight. In other words, because rents are necessarily kept at an affordable level, expenses have gone up so much that those two lines now have crossed, and my, my question really is, is this just something that will continue, or is there something in this deal that we're working with now that will help correct some of that cash flow issue and rectify some of this imbalance?
Yeah, so, I'll make a few comments, and Rick can add anything if he wants. So, by paying off the existing US Bank loan, that now eliminates debt service. So, Mini Mansions will no longer be making annual debt service payments, and that will reduce the expenses every year of the property. I also mentioned US Bank did force-place insurance coverage. We wouldn't, they would no longer have to add that additional cost onto the project as well, so that further reduces the annual expenses. So, by taking action tonight, we are able to assist Mini Mansions on reducing their annual expenses on the project, which helps, which helps in terms of the cash flow. The primary reason we are in this situation is because there was no longer positive net income, so they were no longer meeting their terms of the debt service coverage requirement of their loan terms, and so because of that, that, and they didn't do that for two years, that triggered the automatic default per the loan docs. If you have anything else to add, Rick?
Thank you very much. Mayor Newman, members of the city council, Rick Schrader, President to Mini Mansions. I would add one other thing is that US Bank, very reluctantly, has just allowed us to switch our fire insurance coverage to the California Fair Plan. So, where in 2024, the insurance rates were $277,000. By switching to the Fair Plan, we've reduced that to $166,000. Again, very high, had to meet their very high requirements, but we would expect a little bit more flexibility with our government partners, and hopefully we can reduce that. I also want to mention that, you know, Mini Mansions has been paying all the costs for this. We have expended over the years close to $500,000, and we would continue to make all, pay all the expenses to the extent that revenue did not meet that. We're only in this because of this debt coverage ratio breach of covenant. So, we are making the expense costs, but the less debt service will also go a long way, that's $84,000. And to the extent that we can secure and work with a housing authority to get more Section 8 residents, we think that would also help revenue as well. So, we're optimistic, and this, this definitely goes a long way.
So, what I, okay, very good. I've been asked to wait, so I'll defer for a couple of minutes, Rick. Thank you. Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't have a speaker card, so I didn't realize that it was part of the public comment part. Mayor Protem Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. My first question, what is the current DSCR?
So, they're required, I think it was 1.25.
Yeah, 1 to 105. What was the current?
So, the 105, oh, I don't know what the current is. Maybe Rick could tell us later, but they weren't meeting the 1.25.
What I'm trying to figure out is, if we're below 1 on DSCR, even by eliminating the debt, we're not making enough income to even pay the expenses. Now, what I just heard was the insurance was, is going to be a big portion of this. If we cut almost 100K out of that, well, that might help, but to understand what income is coming in, what the actual expense ratio is, will at least give me some clarity by us removing the lender on a project that's already negative cash flow, how does this sustain? So, that's why I would like to know the DSCR now, or what it currently is. And then, I guess my next question to be added on to that, you mentioned that US Bank was unwilling to waive the DSCR covenant. Is the reason why you would want that so that if the property is not cash flowing, that the expenses could potentially come from Mini Mansion or from other entities? What was your thought on attempting to have them move that covenant?
Because Mini Mansions has been current all of their debt service payments, so the only reason that they're in this situation is because US Bank decided to adhere to the terms of the DSCR requirements, and they were giving a deadline for the payoff of the loan.
Okay.
So, our thought process was, well, if Mini Mansion, or if US Bank doesn't call in that default, then things would continue operating like they have been since the loan has been existent, with Mini Mansions continuing to make their debt service payments, which they have been able to do and would continue to do, and then the project would just continue operating like it is currently.
Okay, so how are they paying for their debt service if the income from the property isn't covering or going beyond the expenses?
So, all these projects have coasters on them, capitalized operating reserves, so they have been dipping into their reserves, which is, you know, very typical with any project, that's why they have reserves. And then, as Rick mentioned, they've also, Mini Mansions has also used some of their own cash to fund part, part of the project.
Okay, so is the expectation that moving forward, they will continue to use reserves and a portion of Mini Mansions? And then, I guess my follow-up would be what happens if the reserves are tapped?
Yeah. And before you answer that, I am going to ask Mr. Schrader to... And before you answer that, I am going to ask Mr. Schrader to come back up.
Yes, I would defer that question to Rick.
How would you like me to?
What I'm saying is this is a unique situation. Normally, there's a staff period, then there's an applicant period. And that's not what we have here. It's a unique situation, so.
Would you prefer me to wait?
No, 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 no. I'm saying please continue, because in consultation with the city manager and city attorney, we've determined that this doesn't really meet the standard staff and applicant format. So I think it is appropriate to have Mr. Schrader and Ms. Boscariño both answering your questions. So please continue.
Let me know if you need me to repeat that?
No, I completely understand it. And I'm glad I had this opportunity to kind of clarify and discuss what supportive housing is. Supportive housing is affordable housing, but it's with a population that's chronically homeless with disabilities. Today's supportive housing is expected to lose money. Hillcrest Villas was expected to lose money because of the supportive population and the limited amount of rents. That's why, under the Mental Health Services Act, MHSA program, when we developed it, that's one of the funding sources, they established two large operating reserves called COSRs, supplemental COSR and a COSR. We currently have $787,000 in the operating reserve. The project, all MHSA projects were designed for that operating reserve to last for 20 years. And we are now currently in year 12, I guess, of that. So it was designed to lose money. Until very recently, we had a positive cash flow, because actually it's not 100% supportive. It's only 50% supportive. All of our other projects in Los Angeles, the rest of Ventura County, are all 100% affordable, and they all lose money. They're expected to lose money, and you draw from the operating reserve every year. But this one was good for the first several years. We currently have a negative cash flow, so there is, the debt coverage ratio is less than 1. But we expect through this operating reserve to last for a number of years. The state presumably, all these projects were designed to last for 20 years, and presumably, through a recent application of the tax credits, other type of HCD funding, that operating reserve would be replenished and continued as affordable housing. Or those 30 units of affordable housing could then convert to more upper lower income, and you could obtain higher rents.
Okay. If the project was never supposed to cash flow, how do we get US Bank a part of this? Why would they lend on a project that is destined to fail?
No, it was never, no, no, no. It was never destined to fail. All of our supportive projects now always had a built-in Section 8, project-based Section 8 contract. So you'd have very high rents. We did not have that with Hillcrest Villas. US Bank is, it was in the project simply because they were the construction lender. They had a $13 million construction loan, made many millions of dollars, but then had to stay in for that one $1.4 million permanent debt. They were expected to leave after 15, 16 years when the property and the tax credits are re-syndicated.
Okay. Last question for you. What's the most current appraised value of the property?
13.6 million. That was based on an appraisal that we did for US Bank probably six, seven months ago.
Okay.
That, I should say, that was the replacement value for the insurance purposes, 13.6 million.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Adam.
Thank you. Well, in the pursuit, in the noble pursuit, I should say, of affordable housing, as Mr. Schrader just said, it's designed to lose money. And in this particular case, it's designed to need more money. But again, that's balanced against the benefits of what affordable housing brings to our community. My question would be this. You can't tell me what the debt service coverage ratio is at the moment? 50%, 10%? It's below?
It's definitely more than, yeah. Below the 1, but.
Okay, but it's below 1?
Yeah.
But for years, it was above 1, correct?
We did receive residual receipts for several years.
But it was the insurance that sent it over the edge, huh? Okay. So the difference, we would be a much more lenient lender, would we not? And in fact, not require a debt service coverage ratio as US Bank is, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Right.
Ours would be a soft debt, not a hard debt.
That's a good way to put it, soft debt. US Bank sees it as a hard one. I understand that, I understand that. In fact, the payback is really from what you refer to as residual receipts, which means what exactly?
Right, so if there's net income, positive net income on the property, then residual receipts can be made. It's not just the city. There's other agencies that receive a share of those residual receipts payments as well, you know, HCD. So we get a portion of that excess cash flow in the years that there is that. So there were several years that we did receive residual receipts payments. The past few years, we have not because of the insurance. And that has caused it to go into a negative net income.
Mm-hmm. But under the current circumstances, it'd be pretty unlikely there's going to be any residual receipts for a while.
Yeah, in discussions with Rick, likely not in the near future.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And if there, even if there were, I think, in the history of this project, they've been nominal.
They haven't, they are definitely nowhere near as much as some of the other projects that they have.
Yeah. Well, these are some of the costs that go with affordable housing.
Correct.
It's not, it's not, it's not free, is it?
It is not.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Engler had a question before.
Yes, I.
Interrupted.
I had.
Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I forgive you for the interruption.
Wasn't my interruption.
No, I think Ms. Boscariño can answer my question. So with the infusion of some reserves and with the cash flow available from the rents, Mini Mansions was able to make the rent, so to speak.
Pay all their bills.
So basically, the bank, there was a technical default from the bank that caused the calling of the loan, basically.
Correct.
So there's, as far as, as far as any current or real present danger of Mini Mansions not being able to pay or keep going forward, your estimation now is that they can make the mortgages and make cover costs going forward?
Yeah, as Rick mentioned, they have currently been paying all of their expenses every year. Capital, you know, the COSRs, the capital operating reserves were specifically set aside. We, you know, they knew this project because of the supportive services was not going to be a net income producer for a long period of time. And that's why they have those two reserves set aside. And that is the point of them, to be able to draw on those reserves each year to meet their expenses. And so we do anticipate that they will, in the future, continue to be able to pay all of their operating costs.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we know when the property fell below the DSCR covenant?
So the 1.05 was, they were notified September that they had not met, because it was two consecutive years that they had to meet the 1.05 or else it shall be a notice of default. So they didn't meet the 1.05 for those two consecutive years prior to September 2024.
Okay, so September 2024, they got a notice?
Yes.
Or they got a notice September of '22 that they were below, and then it stretched out two years? Basically, the question I'm asking, when, if I could maybe ask you, when did you find out that the property was below the required DSCR? Knowing that you needed to get it up or we'd have to solve the debt issue?
It was 2023.
2023?
Yeah, 2023 and 2024.
Any, beginning of '23, mid, end?
After the audits, it would have been, I don't know, early, early 2024, February.
Okay, you don't know offhand what the current DSCR is?
I don't, I don't know. We're doing the current audit for 2024 right now.
Any idea what the annual income is or the expense?
I believe it was probably close to a negative 100,000.
Negative 100,000?
Yeah. But again, we had just changed, we've just changed insurances, so.
Yeah, I got it. My last question for you, maybe this is relevant. Did you guys already move over to the Fair Plan? Or is that now?
We just, we were able to move.
Okay, sounds good. That's helpful, thank you.
We had asked the US Bank a long time ago. They refused to allow us to do that. But I think because of this, going forward, they allowed us to change.
And then Fair Plan, is this just property and liability?
It's just fire. We have to get two other policies to cover the liability and the something else.
Okay, so when we were looking at the 200 and, I believe it was 217,000?
No, I'm sorry, I mean, the total cost is 166.
166 is your total cost?
The Fair Plan, just the fire portion, is 113.
Okay, so all in, you're 160?
Six, right.
166, last loan, you, or, sorry, last policy, you were 277 all in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, so we, you know, we may get residual receipts before you know it. I don't know.
I have a few questions as well. In your presentation, Ms. Boscariño, you mentioned that this loan would also require HCD approval, because they're also a lender here. What's your estimation of the likelihood of that approval?
I would anticipate, because it's the city doing this, that they would approve it.
Okay, very good. And I want to ask essentially the same question Councilmember Engler just asked about residual receipts, but from a different angle. Let me see how to put this. Do we think that the combination of these changes we've made to reduce expenses and/or the likelihood of future syndication will bring up receipts enough so that the cash flow situation will substantially improve here?
So we only receive the residual receipts if there's a positive net income. But based on what Rick was saying about reducing their total property insurance by a little over 100,000, that will significantly help the bottom line on the project. So potentially, we, you know, maybe would start to receive them in the future.
Well, it's one of the concerns I have is, as the staff report makes clear, there have been some years, and I understand the reasons why, where just there haven't been residual receipts. But it sounds like you're saying there is at least the possibility, and maybe more than just a possibility, that that would change for the better in coming years. Is that, is that an accurate reading?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Is there any, and I don't know whether this is a question for you or Rick, Mr. Schrader, or the two of you together. Is there anything we should be doing differently? If we were to proceed with this loan, are there things that we should be doing differently or better to, either to put a sort of early warning system in place so we don't come to this juncture again, and/or we just improve transparency and reporting around this? So we've got better eyes on when there's a problem. We're partners here. We want to do what we can to make sure this succeed. What sort of mechanisms can we put in place to not have this conversation again?
We've had those discussions with Rick over the past couple of months that the city would appreciate being looped in when there are potentially any challenges on any of their projects that we have loans out on or even ones in Thousand Oaks that RDA didn't loan money on, but that they have affordable housing projects on. That if we can all get at the table at the onset and brainstorm and try and problem solve, that maybe that would be a better way to move forward on these types of projects and these issues, being able to work together at the beginning instead of under a deadline that a bank is being put.
Right, right. And that's what I'm getting at. I defer to staff. You have the financial expertise to say how this would work best. But I'm wondering whether this is, I think what you're saying is, our norms, our way of doing things is sufficient. As long as we recognize each other as partners and we keep talking to each other, we'd be able to recognize problems early and catch them early. It doesn't necessarily require something codified. And that's really my question is, do we need to put some structure in place? Or is talking with one another regularly good enough?
Maybe I'll jump in and just add, and I certainly can hear from Rick as well. You know, I think it's important to remind everyone, Mini Mansions is a standalone nonprofit, right? They've been a long-term affordable housing provider in this community and many other communities. And so as a standalone nonprofit, they have their own set of roles, responsibilities. In this case, this project was carried through, last RDA project, as Ms. Boscariño mentioned. And an extraordinary set of circumstances came into play. You've heard a lot of discussions around that. I think every affordable housing provider is undergoing a pretty tough set of circumstances right now. I know Rick can speak to some of those in Los Angeles. I think there is, industry-wise, if I had to speak to this, more than just the city portion of it, right? Because we were here as sort of the place of last resort. The legislature has put a lot of burden on affordable housing. This is just my professional perspective. This insurance marketplace, the fluidity with all of this, it creates a set of circumstances that are going to make this a real problem across the state. And I think our affordable housing providers, whether they be nonprofits or housing authorities, need to band together and demand action on the part of the legislature associated with these components. Because we can't, you know, you talked about these, but, you know, we're here simply because we're the place of last resort. So I want to make sure there's a clarity around the circumstances. Nobody really failed on anything from the, you know, those pieces. This project was operational, right? These circumstances created a very unique dynamic. It's not the only project in the state facing this. Some of them are far worse in Los Angeles. And I'll let Rick add any additional components to that.
Yes, affordable housing is very challenging. I agree with that. It's become more challenging. It's certainly become more challenging in many different areas. But the fire insurance area, in particular in Ventura County and Thousand Oaks, that was the thing. So we have projects throughout Ventura County, Los Angeles, even in Thousand Oaks. Not all of our, we have eight properties. Really, only three of them faced steep increases in property insurance. I'm not sure why those three did. I can see why Hillcrest perhaps did. But the other two, I don't know why, and why the other ones didn't. So this kind of came rather suddenly, and the expense hit rather quickly. And I do apologize, I probably should have been in closer consultation with our city partners. You know, you guys have been so good. I was, it's very interesting, and the staff report reminded that it was 18 years ago that we, that I first came here to the City Council asking for funding for Hillcrest, 18 years ago. And it was difficult development, but it's really been one of the crown jewels of affordable housing, of supportive housing in Thousand Oaks and Ventura County. And I think with the action tonight, hopefully, we'll preserve that, and we will get beyond that. And I fully expect us to soon turn the financial situation around. And I know that this is one of the destinations that our residents at ThriveGrowth, the navigation center, will be going to. So I do want to thank you for all your support and the consideration of this. But affordable housing is very challenging, yes.
Just one additional sort of, I hate to have the exclamation point on top of it, but the council may be aware that Cal Fire is preparing issuance of the latest updates to Fire Maps. Those will drop next month. We anticipate larger swaths of not just Thousand Oaks, but all of Ventura County being washed over in the high fire hazard severity. So. So, this is, this issue will continue to impact in, in greater ways in the years ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Powers and Mr. Schrader. Are there any other council questions, comments? Okay, I will go ahead and close the, it's not really a public hearing, it's a department report. So, there's no public comments. So, we'll move now to council discussion and/or a motion. Council, Mayor Protem Taylor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Thank you, Mayor. Rick, I want to just start by saying, I, I recognize what you're doing out here. You can tell it comes from a, you having a big heart. I know this is a big issue. And we are thankful that you're driving this forward, especially in a hard time. I, I want you to absolutely know that from me. As far as the partnership goes, and it, it sounds like, you know, what you just said you're aware of, just coming from me, having partnerships out in the private market, things go wrong. That's totally normal. What really makes a good partnership is what you just said. Communication and having time to address the solution collectively may have given us a little bit more options. So, it sounds like we're on the same page with that. Moving forward, that would be really good to make sure that if any of our other projects that we have together are at risk, we know what's going on with enough time to try to find additional solutions. You know, when I first started looking at this, I, I, I'm in the, I invest in real estate on the private side. So, everything is about income and expenses and, you know, DSCR for me, I can't go below one-point-two-five. And if I can't pay my debt service, I have a big issue. It's, it's different, and I recognize that. And in the beginning, when I was looking at the loan coming from us with the nine-hundred thousand dollars, I was really struggling with the fifty-five-year term, the three percent simple interest, and the fact that it's only paid back by cash flow that we know it doesn't have. And I, I didn't like that, naturally. But I also recognize what's in front of us right now, that, you know, speaking from the city and the taxpayer dollars, that's, I'm, I'm absolutely considering that as well. We have seven-point-one million dollars into this project already. To not fund the nine-hundred K and have the bank take this project over, we say goodbye to the seven-one. We then have to go stick Kelvin on trying to find additional units out there. It, this is a terrible situation to be in. I don't like anything about it. But I understand that, I think this is our best outcome, is to give you guys the financing to remove the bank and the debt service obligation. I like hearing that you have a plan to pay for the, the expenses. And even in this conversation, there's a, there's somewhat of a, a bigger thing at play, because we are, I, I think you were back when we were trying to figure out what the percentage of affordable housing that new development will have, and we went through our, you know, I can't remember the name of the, the group that was with us, yeah, the inclusionary housing, and we're trying to figure out the right balance. And it's just so fascinating that, you know, you're speaking about affordable housing being very challenged right now. And that's what market rate product feels like, with the state being, I mean, we are. We, we've got a lot of regulation here. It is hard to get projects through. We now have the insurance rise that probably the majority of us are going to feel next re-up. I think it's going to be significant, which makes it more challenging. We have interest rates higher than cap rates right now. So, even on the for-market side, projects aren't getting built. I, I hope you don't mind me saying this, Al. But even Al and I were talking about how we just, you know, changed or updated our general plan, and there's all this new rezoning. There's no building being done. And so, I'm glad that we spent the time we did in our inclusionary housing policy to find the right balance, because if we would have, I think, put that too high, oh, gosh, now we're talking about no more affordable housing. We're talking about no additional housing. We're in a very, very dire situation. So, thank you for being here. I don't want to be in this situation. I don't like it. But I understand that life isn't always one good option, one bad option. I think this is the best option we have. But I am happy to see you put in a position where you don't have so much debt burden that it's putting your project at risk. So, that is my thoughts. I'm okay moving it. Twelve A and following staff recommendation, but I know that I'm the first to speak, so feel free to discuss.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Taylor. Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in two thousand thirteen, I was, I say, an involved citizen in town. And I had the pleasure, and really the honor, of visiting and touring the new facility on Hillcrest. It was a point of pride of, by me, as a citizen, to see this type of high-quality, good, low-income housing for our citizens. And my hat was off to Many Mansions and pride in the city having helped funded it. So, here we are, twelve years later, with a similar question. I had, I had the same reservations as my colleague, Mr. Taylor down there. Is this good money after bad? And I'm, I'm glad to hear the explanations tonight that shows that, no, this is not good, bad, good money after bad, that we are stabilizing a situation that was a technical default, rather than really a more structural default, given the fact that we're talking low-income housing, and the fact that by all this, almost that very nature, it's designed to be right on the edge. I also had a, a change of, of mind in what we're doing here with, with our whole approach to this afford, this particular affordable housing project and affordable housing in general. We, as a council, have taken the position that affordable housing is a benefit in general to the city, to have people of all income and all income levels and abilities in our, in our town, so that we are a true vibrant living town. Therefore, these types of investments in that outcome, I think, are warranted. Whether or not they are, you know, a hundred percent the best financial thing we could do, I think it has a cultural and a citywide effect that makes us a better city. So, with that, I think I would support the out, the motion on the table.
Thank you, Councilmember Engler. Councilmember Adam.
Thank you. Yeah, I was at the ribbon cutting way back two thousand thirteen, right? Yeah, it's, it's actually a beautiful project. It really is. Very contemporary. How many people live there, Rick? Maybe?
Hundred.
How many?
Two hundred people.
Really? Two hundred, did you say? Wow. That's a lot for sixty units. So, there's two hundred people that are able to live in Thousand Oaks. Yeah. I was, I'm surprised it was that many. Anyway, it's very important that we have affordable housing in the city, especially Thousand Oaks. It's not cheap to live here and, you know. This is the price we pay. It's something that we have to do. I can't picture any other use at that site other than affordable. And I would be deeply chagrined for, for any other use to happen. So, I'll support the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember. I want to echo some comments that my colleagues have made, particularly Mayor Protem Taylor. Initially, you said, and I'm quoting here, you said, "destined to fail," and then quickly corrected yourself. And then later, you said, "this is different than in the private industry, in private industry." And I'm, one, I'm really glad you caught yourself on that. And two, I think that the crux of the matter here is how government differs from private industry. I know, because I've been in the private sector, I've been in public service, many in priv, there, there are a couple of, I don't want to call them myths, but maybe misconceptions might be a good word. Many, many of us who have been in private industry do everything we can to make our operations as efficient and as profitable as we can. That's, that's how market-driven economies work. And are surprised to find those are specifically non-goals in government, that, that we have other constraints. Yet, yes, government should be efficient, should not be wasteful. There should not be fraud, and any of those sorts of things. But government has other constraints as well. It needs to be maximally available to residents, to all residents, to the public. And there's something more important, and that's what I think is at the heart of why we're here tonight. Government essentially, especially at the local level, is nothing more than a promise that we take care of one another. And that, that goes ten times for our neediest and most vulnerable residents. And, and that's why we're here. That's, that's what Many Mansions has been all about. That's why we and local government have been partners with you for many years. Was that your ten-year anniversary for Hillcrest Villa? I was so happy to see such a quality project doing so well. None of us were happy to hear, I think it's fair to say, about the changes in finances. But I understand very well why things changed. There was a wildfire that came down right to your street, and some other places right near you went across that street. So, yeah, we live in a very high-risk fire zone, and insurance situations changed accordingly. We're not happy to be here, but again, we have this mission to take care of all our neighbors. And as Councilmember Engler said, there is, there is a wider benefit to all of us, not just those in the very low or extremely low-income categories, but to all of us. I've had many conversations with many different residents of many different political persuasions who agree with one basic concept, which is that, as a community, we need to provide housing at all income levels. And you're doing that, and that's very important. And that brings me to the, to popular misconception number two, which is that if we don't do something, there's a sort of zero-sum game, that there's no cost. We could save nine-hundred thousand dollars by not acting. And I want to challenge that perception. Were this foreclosure to proceed, there would be a very high cost. There would be, as Councilmember Adam noted, hundreds of people potentially would be out on the street. There would be very high housing costs, behavioral services, mental services, public health services, police services, public, criminal justice services. Those things all have very real costs. So, it's not an either-or, zero-sum. This is, this is, we're keeping people in their homes, and we're taking care of the larger community by doing this. So, Mayor Protem Taylor, I agree with you a hundred percent that, that we should not be happy about having to make this loan. I don't think anyone is. But compared with the alternative, I, I too think that it, it is by far the best of a bunch of bad choices. So, for those reasons, I too will support your motion. Please, Mayor, Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification, just because you brought it up. Now, I didn't make the, this was in two thousand three, or two thousand thirteen, when you did the ribbon cutting, when it launched, right? This is way before my time. When, and, and the reason why I said that destined to fail was more, you said something that this was never supposed to be a cash-flowing asset. It was always something that was going to have to be subsidized or to have additional revenue. And when I looked at the investment coming in, at least my interpretation of it was, we were making a one-time investment. We weren't looking at having to potentially bring the taxpayers back to the table to continue the sustainability of this project. Now, I understand that's not this at case, but at least that's the framework in, in which I was stating that. But I think we, by and large, agree with, with one another. Yeah, there's, there's good and bad to all of our decisions. This one, yeah, we, we save nine-hundred grand but lose seven-one in housing. I'm with you a hundred percent there. So, just for the clarification, if that came off, like I was, you know, too investor-minded, that's what I meant by the, the comment.
Yeah, understood. And, and I, I didn't take it as being said maliciously. And to your great credit, you caught yourself right away and said, "wait a minute, this is something different," which it is. It, it's similar, we heard from our library earlier tonight. No one would accuse libraries, public libraries in particular, of being huge money-making operations. They're not. They, they, if we looked at this just on the books, it's, it's all on the outgoes side and zero on the income side, or very little. Or in some cases, it could be, but, but the point, the point here is we're wrestling with a question of community benefit, not, not of, of revenue maximization, profit maximization, and any of those kind of things, that quite reasonably, in our private sector-wise, we would be. And I think we agree on that point.
We do. Would you, would you agree that they go hand-in-hand, though? Like, when we're looking at spending taxpayer dollars on, on maintaining real estate, you're, you're right. There is a community benefit. There is a need here. But I think where we're going to find some agreement is, they both can be true at the same time.
They absolutely are true at the same time.
We can have a community need and be mindful of dollars in, dollars out, so that we're being responsible with the taxpayer dollars that we're putting into it, right?
I'll give you two examples where I, where I agree with you.
Yeah.
Quimby fees, which developments have paid for our public parks. And we wouldn't get that community benefit without the payer of the Quimby fees.
Yeah, right.
Would be number one. And then, number two, you mentioned inclusionary housing. We get affordable housing out of that, which is something we need in this community. So, I think we're in violent agreement here. Any other comments? All right, Councilmember Taylor has put forward a motion, so let's.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say something.
Sorry, Councilmember Engler.
The challenge of providing the affordability is, affordable housing is, is huge. This, Many Mansions is an experienced group in providing this type of housing for folks. And we've seen tonight the difficulty of just making it happen in the first place, and then continuing it to make it happen along the years. The big, one of the big reasons this project was even put in place was the city's use of RDA funds. And I think it's notable that we have not done a affordable housing project like this since RDA went away. Every time I see people from the state, I mention that we need another method by which to fund these types of needed projects. I, I, you know, if you, if you have anybody in the state that you know, people in the, in the audience, please let them know that we need desperately, if this is truly a, a goal of the state and a goal that we on the council share, we should be working together on this and, and finding out a way to afford it, not putting it on the back of private developers as we have with our inclusionary housing ordinance, which I agreed with. But for the state to turn to private sector to provide this public good, I think there needs to be a secondary means of funding it.
Yeah, I think that's very well said. And it's worth noting that, that one of the most ardent champions of, and greatest beneficiaries of housing at all different income levels is our business community. These are, these are people who, throughout the community, who benefit from, from our doing this. Mr. Powers.
Yeah, I just think it bears mentioning here, since we're on this topic, that, A, that's a consistent item on our legislative platform, is advocating for a funding source associated. A full, almost half of our arena allocation is dedicated to affordable housing, laden on us by the state, twenty-five-hundred-plus units, with exactly no funding support. And that's not a model that is set up for success. Back when these projects were built, there was a reliable funding source with a requirement of expenditure of thirty percent of those dollars collected for this use, dedicated for decades. And that went away completely. And it has not been replaced. There's been discussions of having it replaced. But we're not going to make meaningful progress absent some type of revisiting of that.
Any, any other que, comments? Right, all right. Let's go ahead and vote, please. Yeah.
Councilmember Engler, thank you very much, and that motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Mr. Powers.
I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge Lynn Oshida and, but in particular, Jamie Boscarino, our Finance Director. This is not an ideal set of circumstances, and she leaned in in a very big way here, engaging with the nonprofit, our nonprofits lender, and having just countless conversations on this topic. She worked with Mrs. Noonan on this and our outside counsel. So we, you know, are very appreciative of her putting some other things on hold in order to focus in this area because we knew it was so important.
Thank you. We move now to our next department report, 12B, on City Council Member Naming Recognition. Presenting tonight is the city's Deputy Cultural and Community Services Director, Melissa Hurtado. And available for questions is the Cultural and Community Services Director, Jonathan Saret. Ms. Hurtado, good evening.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Newman and City Council members. We are here tonight to discuss City Council naming recognition. So city staff over many years has received inquiries about naming recognition for community members that were outside of city policy. So tonight, we're going to provide information on existing city policy for recognizing community members and share the few naming recognitions that occurred outside of those city policies. We will then ask City Council to provide staff with direction on either pursuing additional or alternative recognition programs or continue with the programs that are already in place. So in 1984, Councilmember Fiore proposed a program to dedicate seats in City Council chambers to recognize community members who have provided benefit to our community. In 1994, council members also started receiving a seat dedication to them when they left office. Recipients have a brass plate attached to their seat and receive a certificate of recognition. So this has become a tradition at our annual City Council reorganization meeting. And, you know, as Mr. Engler, Councilmember Engler mentioned, he was an active member in our community prior to becoming a City Council member, and he and his wife Sue actually have a seat right there in the middle of the audience there. And so.
Almost in the front row.
So that was a seating dedication. And now we have also philanthropic naming. So this is very specific to the Civic Arts Plaza, where members of the community can be recognized through philanthropic naming program with naming opportunities for those who have generously supported the arts. And in partnership with TO Arts Municipal Assets at the Civic Arts Plaza may be dedicated in honor of the donor with city approval. The funds raised from these naming recognitions are placed into the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Endowment Fund, and the interest earnings are used to support the Theater's Enterprise Fund. The ceremonial recognition is the one that you guys are probably most aware of. So the city issues certificates of recognitions, and those can be requested by members of the public and are signed by the mayor. And then depending on the circumstances, these might be presented as a City Council member or presented to an individual at an off-site event or simply picked up by the requesting party. Then we also have commendations. Those are less commonly issued. They must be requested by the mayor to recognize an individual. And when they are issued, they are most commonly presented at a council meeting. So a lesser-known policy by which someone may be recognized is through the street naming process. So someone may request that a street be renamed. They have to file an application along with a filing fee. 80% of the residents or property owners in the affected area must sign a petition to agree to the name change. And once approved, then the applicant must also pay for the materials to install the new signs. So those were the existing city policies. But there have been a handful of times where a city asset was named for an individual that fell outside of the policies described. And you can see here the four that we have listed. And I just want to emphasize that all of these requests came from individual council members. These did not have staff involvement. They came from individual council members and then were approved by the City Council as a whole. And these were all based on the extraordinary tenure of the individual. So as staff is moving forward with the downtown plan, naming opportunities, which are mainly going to be related to philanthropic policy that we discussed earlier, but we're, you know, we are contemplating additional naming opportunities. And this could provide for some of the recognition that we discussed. But we are not at a place in the downtown plan where we have enough specific information to develop a recognition policy at this time. So our recommendations tonight are to obviously find out this project is not a secret project and then to receive the report and provide direction to staff. So the direction that we're looking for tonight is whether or not you would like staff to research other types of recognition programs, make changes to our existing programs, or just continue with the policies as they stand. If you do decide to request that staff research additional programs, we would also like you to consider the timing of our return to City Council to be inclusive of any downtown plan recognition opportunities. And Mr. Saret and I are available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hurtado. Councilmembers, are there questions of staff? Any questions? Councilmember Gutierrez.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Newman. I had a question about, so the street naming policy I learned about in reading and in going over with staff. And now I've learned that there's an addition, that there's a fee. I just wanted to know the fee, just for my, my knowledge.
Sure. So our current user fee policy has that listed as a $1,073 filing fee, and the materials are based on cost.
Okay. Okay. And then do we currently have any formal requests for, to consider anyone for naming or for recognition with some type of, within the naming policy that we're reviewing tonight?
Well, to be clear, we don't accept requests for things that are outside of our policies. So that wouldn't be something that we would be able to process. So anything that would fall outside of those naming policies that I described would have to go directly through a City Council member for recognition in that moment.
So we currently don't have any pathways for residents to identify, you know, leaders or someone that they feel strongly about? And I'm sure there would be criteria, but we don't currently have any pathways for residents to propose that this individual be recognized at the city level with a naming?
With, aside from what we have in place, the seat dedication, the certificates and commendations and the street naming, those are the only formal policies that we have in place.
All of which originate from the council?
Uh, no. The, especially the certificates are mainly initiated by residents.
Yes, okay. So, but the naming portions of recognition all stem from the council?
Correct.
Okay.
Street naming actually would be, a resident can request the street naming.
Okay. And so we wouldn't currently have any formal requests in because the only one that a resident could formally kind of propose is a street naming, and there's a $1,000-plus fee and about, you know, some groundwork of neighbors signing on to changing a street name. Okay. You mentioned at the end of your presentation that if we were to request that staff discover, or kind of do a discovery of what other neighboring cities or best practices are today for these types of considerations, that we would be open to you considering the down, I think you phrased it as like a downtown consideration. I want to, if you could elaborate on that.
Of course. So as we are exploring what our downtown plan is going to look like, there may be opportunities for naming assets in the new downtown area. And so as we're researching kind of potential policies or different things that other cities are doing perhaps, and we're looking these and we take those into consideration, see what our, what might fit with our city. We want to be very comprehensive about doing that. So we don't want to put a lot of effort into researching something that might change once the downtown plan has more specifics to it. Because at this point, we just don't know what those naming opportunities could be. So we, we want to make sure that whatever we bring back to you is comprehensive, and we're not just going to piecemeal it and then have to come back at a later date to revise the policy.
So that would, that would delay a policy being presented before we have more details on the downtown plan and layout and really deep, like way, way further out. Yes?
Yeah, so maybe I'll drop in and give a little bit more.
Mr. Powers.
Clarity here. So most cities, I've worked for three municipalities, and most every city at some juncture has this, this push and pull of acknowledging citizens. And what Mrs. Hurtado provided was kind of a land, we have more than most, I'll tell you. As you look at the seats out here that are all dedicated. When that was established in '84, this is one of the things that you do see, is there's a consistency to it. The challenge with public assets is they are public assets, and they're all very different. And so the ones that fall outside of these policy areas, which are based on consistency, certificates, those components, they are, they've been done because there's no ubiquitous thing. There's a library, there's a teen center, there's a pillar out in the theater, there's this council chambers here. So that's what creates the real challenge in the dynamic. It's really difficult to write a policy around things that are all very different. So street naming, it has a policy attached, most cities do. I'll be honest, it's not a, it's challenging. Because if it's a busy street or a larger street, getting to that 80% threshold is a real challenge for folks. As it relates to this campus and the origins of this campus and the future of the downtown, I want to be clear that the origins of this campus here are that philanthropic-based category primarily. That is where a lot of the funding for this, for the arts, came from that. The Bank of America Performing Arts Center was once the Countrywide Performing Arts Center and so on. At that era, they were doing in perpetuity philanthropic naming agreements. That's, that is not the current best practice. And therefore, every naming opportunity that is moving forward from here on a philanthropic basis is geared towards a defined period of time. And so as we move into the downtown, there will be an inventory of new assets that are attached to that, that will be art-supported in nature, we would anticipate, that we would come to the council with. Now, the one piece I do want to mention, as the council is aware, we did meet with some of the advocates looking to do something for former Mayor Larry Horner because they had brought up this idea of doing an acknowledgement of something in downtown in a Horner's Corner. So we tried to meet them there and have a conversation about that. It didn't meet the time horizon they were looking for because as we all know, this, that, you know, we're not breaking ground on this thing tomorrow. So hopefully that gives a little bit more clarity about how the downtown relates to this.
Yeah, and just for context, so you know where I'm coming from, I'm not a fan of naming buildings and pillars. That does feel very outdated from my perspective. It's a personal perspective. And I, yeah, and I think I've spoken, at least with Drew, to this effect of the equitability of being able to name something and how differing it is from the next naming also challenges something that makes me feel like, oh, we need a policy.
Councilmember, I'm sorry to interrupt you at this point. I want to have a really thorough discussion on this and have everybody give their views on how they feel about naming, including views that you have that I share. But, but I also want to make sure that we get questions of staff answered.
No further questions, thank you.
Great, thank you. And we'll come back to that when we have our discussion. Councilmember Engler.
Thank you. I do have a question. Yeah. In your, in your survey, looking for not just what we have done in the past here in our city, surveying other cities, Mr. Powers served in three, two, three cities. I served in two cities. So I have seen some naming opportunities over the years. And our neighboring cities, have you found any new or unusual ways in which people are honoring citizens who deserve the honors?
You know, we did a little research a few months ago. And to be honest, nothing really I would want to share at this point because I think we need to take a larger look at things and see what would fit within our city. I think it's very important that whatever, whatever is we're going to bring back to you, we would want to make sure that it's going to fit with the character of our cities. So even though we've kind of looked here and there, there's nothing that really caught my eye and said that that fits in Thousand Oaks.
And to further answer the question, in talking to my colleagues, we had our city managers' meeting last week, and we had this conversation. Most of the cities do something very akin to our Adopt an Oak program, which is, and they do it, it might be at a park-specific basis. Hey, we're trying to get this park off the ground, and we're going to have opportunity to get your, get your name up here. We'll name something in honor. In fact, when I moved to California, that was my first assignment, was to, for the Ventura Community Park, I was assigned to raise funds to get the park built and sell every conceivable asset, including the quarter-mile increments around the walking path on the outside. So I ran around town as the new southern guy doing that and then naming, naming it after folks. But that was philanthropic in nature.
I have a few questions. Thank you for your report and for putting this together. You mentioned a couple of existing methods for handling requests. One was commendations, saying they can be requested by the mayor. I did not know that. I promised not to abuse that capability. But I'm wondering what form that takes. Is there, is there something written down that says that currently?
We do have an administrative policy.
Okay. Is that available to council?
Yes, and I will send it to you.
Please, please.
Right after this meeting. It is available on our city website as well.
Yeah, I'm curious to see what is written. And then same question, I guess, for the street naming. Is that, is that also codified?
There is. There is an administrative policy for that as well.
Okay. This is something you and I have discussed informally. I've lived in lots of cities, some of them including New York City, where I was born, have a practice of not naming the street, but having an additional sign. So for example, there might be a street sign that says Sixth Avenue, and then it honors a priest who had served at a church that was on a corner there. That's an actual example. Is there any sort of mechanism in place today to do that additional? We wouldn't be changing the name of the street, certainly not the whole street. We would just be putting an additional sign on some or all street signs.
The way the policy is written now, no. But that, those are the kinds of things that we could contemplate to bring back to City Council to amend that particular policy if City Council desired that.
Great. And we'll get into that in our discussion. But you're saying today, there's no, there's no mechanism to process a request like that.
Correct.
And then I want to be sure I understand and accommodate your request for naming when it comes to the downtown plan, when that gets. I think if I'm understanding correctly, and please do jump in if this is not correct, that what you're asking for is not that we defer the policy implementation, or adoption, rather, to the construction of the downtown plan. You're saying whatever policy we adopt, let's make sure that it allows us to implement these philanthropic and public-minded, you know, whatever, whatever sorts of naming we do at that center. You want to be sure that the policy is capable of handling those things. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, and I'll just jump in for Melissa on this because it transcends several components. I think first and foremost, we want direction on what would you like to do next? Which is, that's the first and foremost. And to the extent you want research done, you know, provide some guardrails around what that looks like. With it comes to the downtown, there, once that project gets to a place where it's entitled and there are assets that are attached to it, Mr. Saret and I and others are going to sit down and have to do a large-scale inventory of those assets. We also have some named components that are going to have to relocate as portions of downtown plan emerge. that are going to have to relocate as portions of downtown plan emerge. Those are in perpetuity naming agreements. So we have to navigate those waters as well. So there's a lot of complexity to the downtown that I think would be kind of, I would almost treat it as an additional component of this as we, as we move forward with a separate council set of actions about what we do and how we do it when that does come forward.
Right. But again, the point is this, this doesn't need to wait until the construction of, of something new or different. And, and we always have the option of modifying a policy at any, at any time, correct?
Correct.
Right. Okay. The final thing I want to touch on is, is something that Mr. Powers alluded to a moment ago regarding Larry Horner. I was a little surprised before saying there's no pending requests. Ms. Hurtado, you and I have discussed this multiple times over at least two years, maybe more, where I've, I've come and asked what we can do to have, he's the only four time mayor without something named for him.
Sure.
So is there, is that not considered a pending?
Well, it's not a formal request because we don't have a policy for that. So we can't accept a formal request for that. Any, any type of request would have to go directly to a city council member.
So you're not, you're not saying the conversation never happened. You're saying there's no way to, there's no way to accommodate that.
No, no, not at all. Not at all. We have several conversations. We've had several conversations with multiple people throughout the years in my time with the city with similar types of requests. And we don't have a formal policy to accept those types of requests.
And to just be clear about those other items that have come forward, they came forward with a specific ask, that, that the council member asked to name that specific pillar.
Yes.
In honor, and there's not been that level of specificity. The only piece that we did have specificity on was the downtown connection, which we did try to meet about, to be clear, and, and, and that did not materialize. So at any point, any of you, you know, have the opportunity to do that on an ad hoc basis.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Gutierrez.
Drew, I just want to, you said at an ad hoc basis currently. And we are revisiting the policy now to see if we want to continue doing that going forward.
You're having a discussion about whether you want another policy?
To?
That would, that would deal with.
That would either include that or?
These have all been handled ad hoc. When I say ad hoc, they mean they all, each one of those cases, going back to Brimhall and Alex Fiore.
I understand they're ad hoc.
Yeah, so they mean, they've all emerged from an individual council member brought forward with a specific ask. I'd like to name this after this.
But that wouldn't still be the case if we come to, depending on the new policy.
This is all your purview as the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, here we go now to public comment. And we do have one public speaker on Zoom, and that is Sally Hibbits. Ms. Hibbits, good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Just fine. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Newman, city council members and staff. As you know, my name is Sally Hibbits and I am one of the current co-presidents of AAUW Thousand Oaks, and I'm speaking on behalf of my organization. We strongly support the agenda item 12B, which provides the needed background for a much needed naming policy for the city of Thousand Oaks. Establishing a clear and thoughtful framework for recognizing individuals who have made meaningful contributions to our community is an important step forward. And we are quite frankly surprised that it has taken the city this long to start a framework for such a policy. In particular, as you already know, we hope this framework will lead to a specific and positive action in support for the Larry Horner Legacy Project, which AAUW believes in strongly. We have yet to hear any public statement from either the city council or this council in support of this project, and believe the time is now right for such a statement, which will be reassuring to the Horner family and the public. We are very thankful for the multiple private conversations that we've had, but at this point, we really believe firmly that something more public needs to be stated for the record. Former Mayor Larry Horner's multiple and long lasting contributions to the Thousand Oaks area deserve proper recognition, which is long overdue. We urge the city to move forward with a policy to ensure that Mr. Horner's legacy and those of other distinguished individuals are honored more appropriately. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And we go back to staff for responses, comments.
Yes, thank you. I do want to mention, you may have seen in the report, the attachment that contains the names of the seat dedications. Both Mr. Horner and his wife Betty do have seats dedicated in the audience.
Thank you. Before we open up council discussion, I want to, I want to kick things off by framing this discussion. I am the one who asked to have this policy discussion tonight, so blame me. I want to make, I want to throw a couple of ideas out there and be happy to hear from, from others. Actually, three things. One is, one is we could agree tonight simply never to name anything outside of this chamber where we have this, this nice habit of recognizing outgoing council members. We could, we could just say, the policy is no policy. We're just not going to do it. That would be the simplest thing. I'm not sure any of us wants to do that. Maybe some of us want to continue an ad hoc policy. Some of us, I think, want something more formal we can point to when, so that we are recognizing people in the same way and have a uniform way of doing that. That's point one. Point two, I want to respond to a comment Ms. Hibbits made, that there's been no public comment on, on naming for Mr. Horner in particular. I have two minds about that. One is, this is not a discussion tonight about naming for any individual. This is a policy that, and we can't talk about the other. It's, it's not on the agenda. We're talking about policy tonight. I personally support that, what, what she's asking for. And I would, I would commit to that, but that's not what we're discussing tonight. Then the final thing I want to suggest in, in kicking this off, and then I'll, I'll open things up, is to adopt what I would call a Cooperstown rule, where we follow the example of the baseball Hall of Fame, which for all of its almost hundred year existence, has had a rule that no one gets named for anything until five years after they've left, in, in baseball's case, active, being, an active player on a roster. And I think that, that has benefited the public's view of, of the sport because it gives perspective. And there have been cases where people are not in the Hall of Fame who, in retrospect, turned out to be really not good examples. And there's a benefit to that. So I just wanted to offer those ideas in framing the discussion, and now I'll open it up for comments. Councilmember Adam.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, as you can see, we do have some policies in place when it comes to seat namings, for example. That's been the council purview. And in the council's wisdom, we economized and had Bob and Sue share a seat. Maybe you'll get your own seat one of these days, Bob. But at any rate, I think we've named 100 seats or some, give or take, something like that. And it's quite an honor to have a seat named. You know, we have philanthropic giving. That, that's a big difference than naming something, naming somebody who isn't involved with giving money. And we do have donors who have donated to this building and they have their names up there. I'm proud to say I have a window named after me. How about that? Probably didn't know that, did you? But, you know, that's kind of a one-off. You know, you get something named after you and that's, that's that. We have had some, I don't know, I guess you'd call them special situations. And there's been like four of them. The Brimhall Library, the Fiori Teen Center, and the latest two, which happened to be brought by yours truly, the Andy Fox Council Chambers naming and for Claudia, the pillar of the arts. But it was council generated, council generated. I just think when it comes to a policy with a naming, that, that would be very difficult for the staff to put together because it's based on intangibles. It's based on intangibles that are very, be very difficult to codify, really. It, it's more subjective. It's not objective when it comes to these big names. And I'm not ruling out naming. I agree with Ty to a certain degree. I think the, the naming trend has maybe run its course. I'm not saying it might never happen, but as far as a policy to try to have staff to codify something, naming a, a non-philanthropic person, I, I'd just as soon leave that to the purview of the council. Because as I said, it, it's based on intangibles. It's based on tenure. It's based on, you know, contributions to the communities, things that are kind of difficult to put into a policy, and a policy might actually hem us in. I'd like to have a little latitude when it comes to something like that. And you can see, there's only been four major naming opportunities in the 65, 60-year-old history of the city. And, you know, I, as far as Larry goes, hey, you know, I knew Larry. Larry's a good guy. He and I used to talk on the phone. He was very supportive of the council and the things that we're doing. His wife Betty's great. She's involved in the community. My wife Marilyn and Betty were both on volunteers in policing. Larry was involved with a lot more than just the council, you know, and he wanted to, he wanted to do things for people. And, and I, and I think he succeeded in doing that. I'm not so sure Larry would want something necessarily named after him to aggrandize his name as much as he might want something that could help the community in perpetuity. So what I'm, what I'm driving at, and some of you may have already thought about this, and they're doing this for Carmen Ramirez in Oxnard. Maybe something like a scholarship in Larry's name would be something that could keep Larry's message alive for years to come and to, and could really help some people out here in the community. I know AAUW's mission is to promote young women and girls in, in society. So maybe a scholarship, I know Larry had two daughters, maybe a scholarship set like, something like that, the AAUW could really get, you know, involved in and keep Larry's name and mission alive and maybe help some young girls. You know, if this idea goes through, it'd be kind of be up to AAUW how they wanted to handle it. But I suspect there would be support here on the dais for a contribution to get that scholarship started. And it's something that, rather than a 20-minute naming opportunity that's over, this is something that, you know, could live on year after year after year for, in Larry's name. So that would be kind of the way I'm, I'm leaning on this thing. I think, I think Larry would like that. I really do, knowing him the way I did.
Mayor Proton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. It's interesting because Ty said something, you just said something. I immediately went to just the naming aspect and, you know, I thought back, when I was a pro skateboarder, I had my name on skateboards, I had my name on shoes. And when I first got my, you know, first skateboarded my name on it, I thought it was the coolest thing. And then after a while, you start like actually not wanting to ride your own boards with your names on it. It actually kind of changes the whole feeling. And even when we saw Bob and Sue's chair, I was like, gosh, if I get a chair, I wonder if I'm even going to sit in it, right? Anyway, I was originally going towards, there's got to be something better than just a naming. Like, it's cool, but I actually, can I ask, ask you a question, Al, what you just said? You're talking about, I know this is now different than the policy. I, I agree with you. I'd actually, I, I like the idea of having a policy so the staff can implement it. And then if we have, you know, a rock star, let's figure out a, a one-off solution. I never met Larry. Everything I've heard about him, he's like an absolute legend. So I like the idea of doing something for him. You're saying create a scholarship in his name and talk about potentially having us approve a certain amount of money to get it started? And then each year, that could be something that gives back to the community in his name?
That's exactly right. Yeah, I'm not necessarily talking about crafting a policy. It's kind of a case by case situation as, as these things come up. And I think it should be the council's prerogative on how to handle it. And knowing Larry the way I did, I think a scholarship would be something he really would have approved of. And I think that the city could start out with some seed money to get it rolling. And I think Ventura County Community Foundation might be a good holding place for the scholarship. And I think the AAUW could determine the, you know, the, the mission for the scholarship funds.
Okay, Drew, I see you looking. Are we, are we veering?
So we're, a touch. So here's, here's, I just, here's what I want to do. I just want to, one at a time. We got, great, we have got, you know, we're trying to afford a latitude for council discussion here. But at the same time, I'm going to ask, you know, we're, it's obviously going to drift into some of those kind of names that have been tossed around. That's fine. But we need to keep pulling it around to, as you're kicking around ideas like this, that we'll end up needing to center that feedback around, okay, what do you, what do you want to come back? And talk in general terms, right? Because you're talking in terms of, what was the, what if the next request came around?
Well, you're right.
So is the better way to say it, why don't we look at potentially having a policy where we look into helping launch scholarships with partnerships? That's what we're talking about.
And have, have staff come back to us with some sort of recommendation.
Have search, have staff research and evaluate potential scholarship programs and policies associated with such a, a scholarship program.
Yeah, thank you. I got a little ahead of myself there, but.
Okay, so then in theory, that would be potentially an option we would talk about. And then if we created that policy, then somebody like Larry could either apply or we could nominate, and that could be an option. Is that right?
Correct. But first, but first, we need to evaluate and research that actual potential program or policy.
Okay, okay. On how it would work?
Yeah, for instance, we would want to look at, okay, what this, the establishment of this one that was referenced for Carmen, what does that look like? We'd probably have, you know, VCCF as part of that discussion. You know, there's parameters we would bring into a broader base discussion.
Oh, that's cool. I like that. I think that's a good idea.
Councilmember Angler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since my chair was featured in the presentation, I, I was going to say, I, I share the chair with my wife, and actually she deserved it better than I did. A little story about that, I was, the night that it was presented to us, I was unable to attend because I was volunteering someplace where I couldn't, couldn't be here. But the, I, I don't want to, you know, don't diminish the value of even so simple a gesture as naming a chair. That is something that, as I look at the other folks who have names there and to be even considered in that same realm with those people is quite the honor.
I agree with that, Bob. Wouldn't want to eliminate naming.
Yeah, no, it, it's something that I believe is, we should, this is, this is a unique to our, to our, that I know of, unique to our city. And it's something that is bestowed on people who have done something in town. So don't, don't diminish what this is. With that said, I think that further, further, further options that we have, and I disagree a little bit with my colleagues, but there should be some bar that needs to be crossed. Some, some level at which these things come to us. I noticed Larry served, what, 16 years? Was it 16?
Four terms, four time mayor.
So just as a foreinstance, not pointing him out, that's 16 years of service to the city. To me, that seems like it's appropriate. Is there, is there a time on or an achievement that we can link it to that then qualifies the person for more than, than being part of this group here? I believe the ones that were given these things, Grant Brimhall, a 20-year city manager here, who guided the city from open spaces to what we see today. That was, I, I agree with some folks that city staff is doing a job, maybe shouldn't. But the people at that time wanted to honor him for that. Alex Fiore, founder of the city, I think that was appropriate. Our, our own colleagues, Claudie Our own colleagues, Claudia Bild de La Peña and Andy Fox, 24 and 20-year history on this dais. Does that qualify? I think it does. So my point in bringing these things up, I think we need to have some level of qualification for these added honors that we wish to bestow on some of our folks, and--
Well, you're not gonna get years anymore, Bob. Term limits, 12 max.
12 max, so 12 years would be the, what I would say we have a minimum. As I looked at our, as I looked at our council member tenures, I was kind of surprised. You know, Linda Parks, six years? Maybe Linda had such a presence that it seemed longer than that, but six years only. That surprised me, that of all the people who have been city council members, there's only a few that have gone 12 years or more. I mean, I was with six or eight people in all the years. So that really shows dedication to the community, and I think that should be reflected, perhaps, as part of a way of qualifying people for this other honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez.
So I can make my comments now, yes?
Please. This is the most appropriate time.
I just want--
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize for cutting you off before, but--
Reel me in, that's okay.
Question time, comment time.
That's okay, I appreciate the help.
The floor is yours.
So, building recognition programs is my forte. That's actually the last thing I did in the private sector. So this is something I feel very strongly about, as well as specifically as it relates to tenure, or anniversaries, or just time dedicated, committed in service to private or public organizations. And so I want to provide some direction. And I think we all agree on a lot of things, and I think we have a lot of good ideas. And I'm not gonna pretend to know what best practices in this space, so I'm just gonna provide the direction. And hopefully, I do that well enough that you all can come back with something spectacular. Before I provide that, I want to, I know we're not getting very specific on individuals, but I would like as much as possible in the facilitation of this new policy, or this discovery, that we not inadvertently exclude Larry Horner. So there's that. And then I think it has to be objective, because that's the only way we can create an equitable kind of measurement of why we do something, when we do something, and how we do something. I would like very much for us not to do anything in perpetuity. I feel, and I feel the same way as Bob. I told Drew, Drew, I just want my chair. Please just give me my chair. I, for the same reasons, like, to be, you know, grouped in with such a caliber of community contributors, I think is more than I could ask, and feels like an honor. But my mind goes to, what happens when we run out of chairs? Or what, and we have to try to get named, our chairs named, before we move, because if there are new chairs come in, then we can take the chairs home, yes? But these are the things that I'm kind of, everybody's like, no, these belong, I know, but, you know, I can, sometimes they do it in movie theaters, I don't know, just putting it on there. So I just, I don't take it lightly, the practice, and the policy, I want to reiterate that the policy does exist. I think Sally earlier mentioned that a policy doesn't exist. We are revisiting an existing policy. So I want to call that out. And then, second to that, I think, when we talk about intangible qualifications, that's another area I would like us to be very mindful, just very mindful on what we say. I'm glad we talked about term limits, because if we cut it off at 12, then I feel like that's reasonable. But again, just be very mindful as we kind of get into the criteria. I probably have said that three different ways now. The last one, the last point I think I'll make, I support the scholarship ideas and just different pathways that are more, like, amplify the giving that the individual being recognized represented. I really like that, I really like that. And second to that, I know we just came out with a public art policy. I'd love for us to visit maybe an intersectionality there of like murals, and things of that nature. I know for Carmen Ramirez, there's a beautiful mural down in Oxnard, and that was a prominent figure, and there was a tragedy there, so it's a little bit different, but I wanted to call it out as a really beautiful, just gesture and opportunity to consider. And then lastly, which I think is really important, and this is probably why I stressed it so much in the beginning, is it feels short-sighted to have all of the, the only pathway for naming and recognition of our community leaders to start and end with the council. I feel as though we don't know every individual and their contributions to city, to the city or to our community, and so it feels short-sighted. That's probably more work than you all want to do, because that would be a different set of criteria, right? But just food for thought, in the most ideal policy, there would be a pathway for community to present, similar to the name street, street naming. I'm not saying don't put a, the groundwork that one needs to manage, and really show the collective community's support behind, but just something to think about. And then the last one is, when we talk about fees, I want us also to just be mindful of that. That could be a barrier. Even if we got 80% of a neighborhood, maybe that isn't a feasible marker, and maybe it is, I don't know, I'm just, again, food for thought, and somewhere I'd like us to stay mindful on. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to try to recap where we, where there's consensus and where there's not. I think, and please correct me if this is wrong, I think all of us are fine with the existing seat naming policy. While I like very much Councilmember Angler's comments about having some threshold of a higher number of terms, that doesn't apply with seats. A one-term council member gets a seat named for them, and community members as well. So it applies to even someone who served one term, it applies to members of the community, and I think what I've heard is that everyone is fine with that, and no change in that policy is needed. So there is consensus there. I also want to acknowledge that this is not, naming is not an ad hoc thing. There are written policies in some areas, and there are vast gray areas in others. Let me put it that way. I want to make a couple of comments about my personal biases here. One, for a guy who brought up this whole discussion, I actually don't like naming or symbols or any of that. I would much rather we spend our time on substantive programs that help people, and not point to a symbol. And I'm not interested in food fights about symbols. It's not a good use of anyone's time. At the same time, I recognize that it's important to honor beloved members of our community, and longtime public servants. And while we're not going to make a decision about how to honor this person or that person tonight, I do think it's a major gap in our city's policy, in what we've done as a city, that we have honored in an ad hoc way all of the four-time mayors in the city, except one. And that's a shortcoming to me. So it's not that we don't do naming, or we don't have a policy for it. We have done naming for everyone, except one. And I would like to see that rectified as soon as possible. Because that is a shortcoming. That's not a good reflection on us. Even with all the concerns I have around naming, I think we need to address that ASAP. And I would be for that, doing something on that. With regard to the scholarship idea, it's a lovely idea. I'm happy to support that happening. However, I want to be clear on what this agenda item is. This is about the city council's policy. It is not about AAUW's endowing scholarships, or setting, or any external body. This is on us. We can't put this to them and then say, great idea, here's some money for that. This is about what we, as a body, do for naming. And I don't want to duck that. I want to be clear that if we're going to name or not name people, that's a decision that we make here. We may also want to help other organizations to do things around that, and I'm fine with that, in fact, I would support that. But that's not, that's not what we're talking about here. I want to go back to comment Councilmember Angler made about, I like your phrase, it levels of qualification, and you suggested a three-term threshold. Threshold is, I guess, is a way to put it. And I would support that. I think that's a reasonable standard. I don't know if that would have applied to Carmen Ramirez in Oxnard. She was a council member, then she went off, and she was a board of, she was on the Board of Supervisors at the time of her death. She was the chair of the board. Carmen was a friend of mine. She has more than a scholarship named for her. She was, the Family Justice Center in Oxnard will also be named in her memory. So that, again, brings us back to where we started from, which is how do we honor longtime public servants, beloved members of our community, in a way that is not just ad hoc? Or do we want not to do that? Do we want to leave it ad hoc and have it be intangible? Councilmember Adam.
I understand the desire to have some sort of a policy, but I think we would be heading into a very slippery slope here. Like Bob says, well, they gotta serve three terms. Well, what if there's somebody who's great and only served two? I mean, when you start putting these kind of rigid requirements on there, you're gonna X out some people that maybe could have deserved it. Maybe somebody will die in their second term, and, oh, well, he didn't serve three, or she didn't serve three, can't do it. You know, that gives the council no latitude. And I also think, this is really special. Again, only I had four times where we've made a significant naming opportunity. I don't want to dilute that. Because if you put out a policy to the public, we're gonna start getting requests. Well, you know, I want this guy, I want that guy. All of a sudden, the council purview and discretion is eliminated, and now it's just some kind of a bureaucratic function. Well, all the boxes are checked, so, I think that's, I don't like that. I don't like that. I think, and as far as the policy here with the seats, we have 300 to go, okay? Plenty of seats.
So we're okay.
And furthermore, even though it's a quote-unquote "policy," the seat has to be justified by what the people do in the community, and we have to vote on it. So it's not a rigid, you're not guaranteed of getting a seat, other than if you were an elected, and then you get one automatically, I guess.
Right.
But when it comes to community members, you know, again, the council chimes in.
But Al, you know, we have had--
I think we've got to be really careful about something that's inherently subjective, and inherent with intangible things. And I do think we could end this meeting by asking staff to come back with us with some sort of scholarship parameters. And it doesn't necessarily have to be for Larry, I guess, but, I mean, come on, we've been asked about Larry now for a year. We've got to face up to it and figure out what to do. Now, and again, we don't have to be necessarily specific to one individual, but I'm almost prepared to make a motion that staff does come back to us with the parameters for a
What's the pretext of the scholarship?
For any, particularly individual.
Is it a city scholarship?
What?
What's the pretext for the scholarship that you're proposing? Is it a city-run scholarship?
What's the what, David?
The pretext, the auspices.
The pretext?
Yeah, under what auspices would this scholarship exist?
Oh.
Is it administered by the city?
Well, again, we might be going too far afield here, but my vision would be that the AAUW would manage it.
Right. And I'm not disagreeing with that--
I think AAUW would jump at the chance personally, but--
I do, I just don't think that's what we're talking about here tonight. That's putting this off on them, and then saying, hey, that's a nice idea, we'll give you some money for it. And I would be first in line to give money for it, but let's talk about what we're talking about here, which is not that. It is, what do we do as a matter of city policy?
Well, that's what I'm saying. My recommendation is we pursue the scholarship policy only. I don't want to put staff on the spot.
The problem with that, that I have, is it is essentially a form of outsourcing of naming, that we are having someone else, under their auspices, set something up, and then we go, yeah, that's nice, here's some money--
No, no, wait a minute, no, we're not saying, yeah, that's nice. We're gonna make a significant monetary contribution. We will be perfectly amenable to the scholarship recipients coming before the council, maybe once a year or semiannually, to be recognized, and to have the scholarship whose name is in to also be recognized, so there'll be a perpetual, you know, turnover of recognition, and helping people at the same time.
But it would be administered externally to city government, correct?
Yeah, I would envision VCCF would probably be the best organization to do that.
Right, right, but whatever the organization is, you're saying it would be some organization external to the city of Thousand Oaks, correct?
Yes, but with a kickoff contribution from us--
I get the city participation part. I'm just asking about who's--
Well, you sound like having AAUW manage and house the VCCF is some kind of a disadvantage, would be the problem--
The problem I'm having with this council member is that we have already, in an ad hoc way, which, because of the intangibles you mentioned, we as a city have done things to recognize all of our four-term mayors, but one. And the but one would continue under this, because it's still not the city, it's still not a city program, it would be somebody else's program that we would be contributing to. And that seems like, I don't like the optics of that, to be blunt, because it's not the city making the recognition. It's honoring somebody else who's doing that work. And I struggle with that. I'm not in any way against the idea, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I would, I guess what I'm looking for is, if we're going to name this forum, or name a pillar, or whatever other honors that we've bestowed, we should also be honoring other, and I'm not just talking about Larry Horner here, although I certainly think it's well past time that we honor Larry Horner--
No, I'm with that, and you're proving my case.
It should be a city bestowed honor.
Right, and you're proving my case. Again, we're talking about intangibles here, and, you know, the debate back and forth amongst the council members shows that there is some intangibility happening here. You can't, I just don't believe-- You can't, I just don't believe you can boil this down to a policy. And I think that's really putting the staff on the spot.
I'm smiling a little bit because you and I differed over the crossing card policy when that became an objective thing. And I was saying, "You can't boil this down to..." I was basically making the same argument you were.
We have lesser policies, believe me.
Some of them are objective, and I was saying, "No, there's a subjective component to this." And I was voted down on that, but essentially I was making your argument tonight, which is that there are intangibles to consider.
Yes.
I don't disagree with that. What I am differing on with you is that this would be coming from somewhere else. And I think it's a problem if we're recognizing all these honored figures but one.
Oh, I don't feel, but this is exclusionary at all. There's lots of, Jackie Irwin's served how many years? There's lots of people that have served. And I think the city would be significantly involved.
Was she a four-time mayor? I'm not in any way diminishing her service.
Well, see, again, now see, you're getting into the intangibles, you know, debating about this and that and who. That's why you really do have to take it on a case-by-case basis.
If I may.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
If I may, just being the newest council.
Please.
And kind of walking into this ad hoc it's almost an unstated policy, right? It has to start and end with a council member. And that is the issue I'm taking with it. And I think what the issue is here, even with you suggesting, "Well, let's do a scholarship," and David saying, "Why haven't we done this yet?" But neither, and I had no idea that you had proposed the last two ad hoc recognitions. So sure, we could all, at our discretion, and, you know... I just, I think, I think we need a policy. I think the ad hoc of it all is concerning. There's a long list of community contributors here with brilliant tenure, right? And my background is we should have taken the time, and I'm sure the city did. And they, I hope they felt recognized when they were alive and when they were serving and after feeling, you know, feeling their time here being in service, that they felt a pride and they received their chair and felt recognized. So I think we're dancing, or I'm watching this lovely dance, and I think we just have to give the direction we need the policy to be-
Are you saying we need a policy for a naming recognition, then?
I would like us not to name-
Well, then what do you want a policy for?
I would, well-
If it's not a naming recognition, what else is there?
At minimum, to define a naming policy, at minimum. But no, I'm not, I, that's when I, I was giving comment before it was time, was saying that naming public assets is an outdated method of recognition.
I tend to agree with you. I do. I wouldn't rule it out. I think Bob's right. People, you know, feel recognized to have something named after them. I wouldn't rule it out, but so you're asking for a policy, then? For what?
Well, I think if we don't want to rule it out, we need a policy.
For what? For naming?
For naming.
Well?
To address the ad hoc-
May I just interject for a second? I just want to make it clear that anything we bring back is not going to be as grandiose as a building or a pillar. I don't think that we will be able to make that discretion, and that has to be made by city council. I think anything that we may brought back would be somewhat similar to a seat dedication that we already have. And maybe it's amending a policy, you know, amending the current policy that allows for community members to be able to submit an application or go through a process. Maybe there's something else that can be done with the existing policy rather than coming up with a new naming policy. Because a building wouldn't come from us.
Mayor Proton Taylor.
Okay, so there's a couple of things I'm hearing as well. One, we do have a naming policy right now, right?
We have multiple.
Multiple. So I think what you're saying, do you mind if I call you Ty or do you prefer Ms. Gutierrez? Ty, is that you might want to add to that naming policy? When you say we need a policy, are you saying we need to add to it?
I just think there's naming living outside the policy.
There's, say that again, I'm sorry.
There's recognition being given at the discretion of a council member outside of the policy.
If I may, just to clarify on this point. So there are written policies today on seat naming, on commendations, on street naming.
Right.
And philanthropic. Those are all written down.
Right, we're tracking.
In addition, in addition, there have been some four-time exceptions done on an ad hoc policy for which I think there's nothing written.
Right, so, and maybe Drew can kind of clarify, but those four situations were council members, an individual council member. And by the way, that can happen today. I mean, that can happen tomorrow.
So that's kind of actually where I want to go with this.
Yeah, if I might, I just want to be really clear for everybody here. I think where you're getting hung up is there's no asset that's been discussed. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about Larry. There's no asset attached to it, right? And so every one of these other ad hoc situations had an asset attached to it. And so in this, that's what makes this difficult. You can't do a policy without having something where it's, "Okay, what's the thing?" It's very clear what these things are. In fact, when this was established in '84, they just did it for city council. Then they realized, "We need something for the community." And then they thus expanded it to be community-based.
Right.
And then you get back to the intangibles because knowing Larry the way I did, I personally don't think it would, he would prefer to have, you know, a door named after him or whatever that asset would happen to be.
So Al, if you don't mind, let's get back to that for one second. The one thing I want to clarify on is it's coming off to me that, and I've heard this multiple times, that Larry is the only mayor that served four times that's not being recognized, almost as if we left him out and the qualification was mayor for four terms, right? If I'm hearing that correctly. Claudia served five. Andy Fox served six. That's what I'm saying. So the qualification was not four, so I just want to make sure this isn't him being left out. And then even with what Bob was mentioning about, you know, "Let's have it serve three terms for you to potentially qualify." First person I thought about was Jackie Irwin. Jackie Irwin served 10 years, right? And then moved off to Assembly, so for me-
How many times was Dennis Gillett mayor? Three or four at least, right?
So I guess to keep this simple and not let it get too sloppy, just so you guys know where I'm at, the policy as it is right now, I don't have a problem with at all. I like the idea of adding something. I do like Al's idea. I like adding something that's a continuous give-back. Now, you know, the mayor brought up that we're passing it along. The way I look at it is we're potentially partnering with somebody who's going to be the admin of it, same way we do with the project that we talked about earlier with Many Mansions, right? They are the operator. We are very involved in that project. So I don't see it, at least how you were mentioning, that we're just passing it off and we're potentially not highlighting the individual in the same way that we are a handful of others. I think this is a really good idea. I think there's, there's something that we can see each year from it that could benefit others. So I don't think you made the motion, but I do like the idea of directing staff to look into an option like that, what it would look like. I think that would be an amazing way to honor someone. So, yeah, so look, if I can, because I'm not even totally sure on the motion, but I'll make the motion to direct staff to look into an option like a scholarship program. And then I'm also going to include in that that I think the policy as is, is sufficient, and that would be a potential great add-on to it.
Is there any other comment?
I think that gives us a lot of latitude, people.
Councilmember Engler? So you're reaching for the mic?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Interesting discussion. I think I agree with my colleague who's down at the end of the dais here. Both my colleagues down there. The idea of this scholarship is an asset. It's not the same as a name on a pillar or something like that, but it is an asset that honors in the same spirit as we honored other people. So I don't have a problem, per se, with a scholarship and that sort of thing that we would establish for in the name of one of our honorees. I still think that whatever we do, and my addendum to your motion would be for staff to look at all of our comments tonight and maybe try to massage them into a coherent policy. I do think that having some qualifications for this added honor is important. And if someone, if someone were to die in office, there's, you know, I guess there's a way we could go, we still have the ability for any individual council member to bring it to council and have an exception made.
The key, Bob, what is that added honor that you're referring to? A scholarship is something substantial, something we can understand?
I'm not saying it's not, that is an added honor. Larry has a chair. I mean, like a lot of people. An added honor would need to have some qualif- in my opinion, needs to have some qualification to bring it to that level. And I threw out a 12-year, you know, on-the-dais type thing. There might be other ways we can massage that as far as 12 years on the council or, gosh, I can't even think of something right now, or having brought, been a teacher in the schools for 40 years. That's just, I'm not advocating that. I'm just saying that there could be other qualifications that would raise that person to the level of this honor.
I've seen, Bob, I've seen naming opportunities reversed. You name something after somebody and then he disgraces, he or she disgraces themselves and they yank the naming opportunity. It can work in reverse.
That could happen, too.
Oh, God forbid.
I like my chair, but I'm going to try to keep myself clean so I can keep my chair.
I think you're going to be okay, Bob. You'll be okay.
I think I need to ask for clarification from Councilmember Engler. I'm not sure what you mean by, the motion on the floor right now is to not touch the other programs and policies, but for staff to evaluate a potential scholarship program as discussed by Councilmember Adam. But when you were asking that staff look at all of your comments for added honor, are you talking about added honor for the scholarship program? What are you asking for? I'm not, I'm not-
No, for just the overall policy in honoring-
So you actually want changes to the, the motion is to leave those policies and programs alone, but you want us to not, you want us to-
The policy that we're discussing is not a policy. It's an ad hoc bringing of an idea to the council by an individual council member. It's a way that we can honor people at our whim, so to speak. I'm just saying that to have that, we should have some parameters to be able to bring that to us.
It's a special and rare thing, Bob. Special and rare.
Mr. Powers.
Sorry, I didn't want to just jump in on top of everybody else. I was just chatting with staff just to make sure there was clarity on at least what was on the floor here. And in regards to Councilmember Engler's comment, I think as we understand that, what we would likely do is return to you with that guidance on the thing, what the program is. But then also maybe a menu of recommended criteria, perhaps, that you all could select. We'd narrow that down based on kind of what we'd heard and that you could kind of select from within that. And some stipulations, programmatic stipulations that would go around that. So that's how I understand what you were saying. And, okay, yeah, and we're comfortable in doing that.
I need some clarification on the motion to decide whether to support it. I'm hearing from Councilmember Engler about some criteria. Qualifications, yeah, as you put it. Levels of qualification. And I presume that that refers to city council members or members of the community.
That would be one parameter for a city council member.
That, but the non-elected is exactly what I'm getting at, is earlier tonight, it seems like a long time ago now, we had at least one future NFL player in the room. And maybe that player will be a great star and it will be a great feather in our cap that this kid came from the Newbury High School, Newbury Park High School Panthers. And we might want to honor that student athlete at some point in the future.
Mayor Newman, and I think that would be part of the menu of options, right? So as Drew mentioned, we could have a menu of criteria and include community members as part of that menu.
Right, so that's really what I'm getting at, is when we get to this level of qualifications, I'm wondering how we draw, how we define this. And I think there's two tracks there. One is for public servants and the other is for members of the community at large. That's all I was asking for.
Whole new can of worms. I mean, that's what these policies are going to do. They're going to invite situations that we don't necessarily agree with, frankly. And it could potentially dilute what we're trying to do here. Yes. Someone in the public, "Oh, well, here's the policy." This is, oh, okay. My neighbor qualifies for that. I don't know.
I don't want to reduce it to an objective series, a checkbox. I concur 100% with what you said about intangibles.
I go back to, we just had four naming opportunities in 65 years.
Right, and I keep coming back to my real discomfort around the fact that there's four four-time mayors here and there's only one that hasn't been named. And I would like our city to do something about that. We differ on what that something should be.
I think the motion addresses that personally.
Right, the motion's been made.
And again, here's the intangibles. I happen to, I knew Larry, okay? We talked on the phone. We were friendly. And this is the intangible part. This is what I think Larry would want.
Would most have wanted, right. No, I understand.
But that's just me. That's my opinion.
Right.
Anyway, there's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor. I want to clarify again that I think a scholarship is a nice idea. I also didn't, I don't want to belittle, you mentioned Jackie Irwin, Assemblymember Irwin. I don't want to belittle her service, both on this council.
Exactly.
It might be below the, how was it put? The level of qualification, but there's no taking away, you know, her considerable contributions to this community, so we need to-
It's just, you know, again, it's just kind of a confluence of events that occurs that you don't even sometimes anticipate. It just happens. I use the example, we have a council member, you know, seven years in and dies. Oh, he didn't make it to three terms, can't do anything for him or her. Maybe we'd want to have a memorial or something. I think you see where I'm getting at.
I do. I also take Councilmember Engler's point about levels of qualification. And you're saying we shouldn't have, just be anybody, so that's one way of addressing it.
I'm saying it's a slippery slope and it's putting a lot on the staff to try to codify something that's inherently subjective and intangible.
And Councilmember Adam, I wouldn't recommend that one of the qualifications is that you die. So.
Coins and stamps, right?
I just think that we do.
Line D.
I just think we do need some, this is a high, I mean, as you mentioned, four times in 60 years, this is a very high honor. And we should have some way of quantifying, and I throw out 12 years. I just throw out 12 years because that is a round number. 10 years, 14 years, as council members, that would help us come to an agreement that this person has served long enough and well enough to be able to have it.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know how many times Claudia was mayor, maybe she wasn't mayor four times. Maybe she's only three, so she's out.
She was mayor four times.
Yeah, okay, well.
If I may.
But I like what Claudia did and I thought she deserved it.
Larry Horner is the only four-time mayor that has not been honored by the city.
Okay, well, you keep saying that with the implication that somehow there's some, you know, desire here to keep Larry out. That's not the case at all.
I'm not saying that at all.
Not the case at all. But you've said it repeatedly.
I'm merely stating a fact.
You said it repeatedly inferring that there's.
Councilmember Adam, if I may.
Who said that?
It's Ty.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Hi.
Anyway.
Could I ask what drove your last two requests? What criteria or what contributions did those?
That's a good question. It was really kind of a confluence of events. In Andy's case, he was, it was his last term and he was leaving the council after 24 years. He devoted extreme amount of time and effort to the city. He was a big believer in good government. There was a, I think, a palpable wave of sentiment that we needed to do something for this man. And based on his contributions, I came up with this idea that, and his belief in good government, that we named the city council chambers after him. And the council liked the idea and we did it. And then a little bit later, it was Claudia's last term. And Claudia had a wonderful 20 years with the city. And she was very big on the arts and we all knew that. And I just felt that she deserved some special recognition. And that's where we came up with, and Bob and I talked about this, we came up with a pillar of the arts. It was a good idea, don't you think?
Yeah, I love the pillar. I asked where it's going if anything changes in that part of downtown or with the downtown plan.
But at any rate, it just seemed appropriate based on 20 years of commitment to the city.
And Councilmember Gutierrez, if I might add on to that, for each of these cases, the city attorney required that a resolution be attached to it.
Oh, that's true.
And in that resolution, it called out the specific.
The achievements.
Achievements in the resolution that the entire council adopted. And the reason that we asked for that was really because these were one-off and because there needed to be a historical record as to why the city council that year decided to do this. And that, in absence of a policy, that's what you get, that's the best thing that we can do to provide some formality and backstop.
All right, I need to pull out my city attorney card here just to get us all back on the page here.
There's a motion.
The motion on the floor.
Yes.
Is directing staff to evaluate a scholarship program as referenced by Councilmember Adam and leave the other programs and policies alone. Now, Councilmember Engler has requested that we also include having staff look at all of the comments by the city council on for added honor such as criteria qualifications for this ad hoc type of naming opportunity. That is not part of the motion unless Councilmember Taylor wants to accept that as part of the motion. It's not part of the motion.
Okay, Bob, give me a little bit of clarity. So directing staff to include the entirety of the conversation and potential ideas on when we do ad hoc or creating a policy that gives the right of names to be put on assets? Does that make sense? Okay, so what I'm trying to get is to add to this motion, do you want to direct staff on top of looking at a scholarship program to take all of the discussion and use that to present potential policy towards when we do a naming of assets?
Yeah, some sort of qualifications on when we go to this higher level of honor. I love the idea of the scholarship.
Right.
I also like the idea of the pillar. I think, you know, as Al said, we came up with that as we sat a cup of coffee together. Doing that sort of thing, though, I think we need to have some baseline of qualification for that.
So if I'm directing staff, what are we going to direct them? To give us, like, what does it look like as a three-term to be on it, a two-term? What are the levels? And I guess what I'm really getting at is, is this something we can figure out now?
Well, my suggestion was going to be to just take a look at a range of things, give you all a menu.
Okay.
And you may choose, you don't want to do a scholarship thing at all when it comes back in. But the point is that we give you a menu of choices.
If I may, I think, just using your terms, he had said to investigate some levels of qualification.
Okay, then let's add that to the motion.
Got it.
And I could use clarification on one other point, is as currently written, your motion says that staff will research and evaluate other programs around and policies associated with. So on the other, evaluate other programs. Ventura County has a naming policy right now. Is that something that staff could consider as part of this? Or are you only looking at having staff look at scholarship programs?
So when you're saying, you're talking about a new naming policy that we currently don't have, you're talking about like the one-offs that we've done?
I'm not saying copy the county's policy, I'm saying look at it and see if there are some ideas. Here's another naming policy by a local agency. And that could be something that we do or do not take ideas from, but let's look at that.
Well, it sounds like that's probably part of how Mr. Engler stated the add-on, correct?
That would be something we would do in our research to draw.
So if we're voting for this, staff would be, just to finish the thought, if we're voting for this, you're saying staff would then be looking at the Ventura County policy as part of its research?
So I just.
I'm looking for commitment on that.
Yeah, I want to clarify around that, right? So you've, I'm hearing several things. I'm hearing the scholarship component and then I'm hearing a broader naming idea. Ultimately, the broader naming thing is going to draw to the question of asset naming. And that is where I think everybody gets hung up because there is no inventory of assets that you have pre-selected to name. So I just, in terms of criteria and establishment and, you know, who gets named what, we can incorporate that, but that's an addition to the motion, I think, if you want to look at exploratory missions into other types of naming.
Right, we can't evaluate a naming policy because we don't have one.
Well, you don't have assets. You don't have the assets.
So what you're asking is staff to create one.
We do have naming policy, Al. We have naming policies on several different kinds of assets today, including street signs.
We're not talking about the seats, we're talking about.
Street signs.
Big assets, like Drew just mentioned. We don't have one.
That's the difference of degree, not kind. We do have naming, we do have naming policies today, written ones, today. My request of Councilmember Taylor is just to confirm that when, as currently written, the motion says evaluate other programs, I'm just asking that we look at Ventura County's policy as part of that research. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, so my framework to the motion was, I personally don't need the qualification for the one-off personally. I think our policy, we have the naming policies that you just stated, we have the one-off that we've given in these very rare and special circumstances. Really what I wanted to direct staff towards was, is there a new type of asset that we could name for these, call them legends, that I think is more valuable than just sticking it on, you know, pick a part of the city? Like, is there a new thing we could do today that gives back more, is more relevant? That was more the framework of where I wanted options or, you know, potential ideas of how that would work. For Bob, you know, to incorporate more of the discussion, to come up back with multiple ideas on what sounds like potential assets and potential qualifications for a policy? Is that the correct way to say it? That's kind of what the add-on is?
My thought is not so much other assets, I don't think, I'm not looking for a list of pillars around we can use. My thought was simply to come up with a way to qualify these higher ranges.
Okay.
I think.
Okay, so then I got it. So then the motion is going to be for, to direct staff to come back with potential options to qualify for this.
Higher honor.
Higher honor. And I think the add-on that I want, because I like his idea, is what it would look like if the scholarship program became an asset that we honor people with.
So there's two questions here then. One is the threshold, like what qualifications we use? And then the other is what people who do qualify, where they get honored, what it is they get honored with.
Yeah, for me personally, I don't need the qualification. Like, I'm, how it is right now, I'm good with, but.
If I understand correctly, that's Councilmember Engler's suggestion.
Right, right.
So that's one piece. And then the second piece, and I think this is where there is less clarity, is what that gets applied to. I think if I heard you correctly, you just recommended some non, I don't want to call it a non-asset, but something different than.
I'm offering, I want to look into offering something that we don't currently offer because I liked that idea. So that's really what I want to direct staff towards is, what would that even look like?
Mr. Mayor.
You're gonna, like Drew said, you're gonna list all these assets and so, you know, what, okay, so I got a window, somebody got an elevator shaft. I mean, they did. You named somebody, you named the elevator.
Councilmember Engler.
Where does it end?
Councilmember Engler.
I think, I think, I love the scholarship idea. I think it's a great idea. That does preclude us from, that's just one more arrow in the quiver, so to speak. We could still decide that this particular person, as was with Claudia, a pillar of the theaters. That was a better use of our assets for her honor. I think in this particular case, you bring up a good point, Councilmember Adam, that this other four-term mayor was very much interested in promoting education throughout the community.
He was.
And so this, your idea may be a better fit for that person.
That's right, Bob.
So it doesn't, we're not precluding if this person comes back up to us for a naming honor, we could still decide that, no, we want to name, I don't know, name an asset, name the parking structure after him, whatever, but the.
But you're right, one size does not fit all.
Right, so I'm saying.
Everybody's, each person's different.
What you're proposing is another approach that we do need to do a little bit of research on to see how to go about it. I think it's appropriate that Councilmember has put it forward as part of the motion.
Well, it's Mr. Taylor's motion, so.
Okay, is there any?
Trace, you want me to try this again or do you feel like we have everything we just covered captured?
I want to try it because I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I'm not sure we are.
I'm not sure we are. I'm just going to put that out there. I hate to say this, but I don't think we are.
Okay.
I still have on the table, this is the actual motion, is that the only thing that we're looking at is a potential scholarship program and the formation of additional criteria qualifications. We're not touching the existing policies. If the intention is to look at other things outside of a scholarship program, then that needs to be articulated by the motion maker.
I don't need to look at something outside of the scholarship program.
Because I think that that's where the confusion is.
Yeah, you know, well, I'm not going to stick to my motion because I'm actually okay with what Bob said. If we want to direct staff to come back with potential policy options or qualifications, and then I would like to direct them to see if what Al just presented is a good option as an asset to name somebody. So that's, however that's going to sound on the motion, that's what I want the motion to be.
All right, and I will say that I think, and I'll speak for Ms. Hurtado, Mr. Schret, I think we have enough to have a well-rounded report back to council. We were just talking timeline because I know that's likely the next question associated with it, just given some of the things on the horizon, I think we feel comfortable that we could be back within two months.
City Clerk, do you understand the motion?
Yes.
That's the most important thing here. We need to make sure that it's memorialized correctly.
I'll read what I have. And I hope it doesn't open a can of worms.
Say it.
Yeah. To direct staff to keep the current naming policies and research and evaluate other programs around and policies associated with a scholarship program, and also consider city council comments from the discussion regarding parameters to qualify an individual to be honored in an ad hoc manner and what it would look like if the scholarship program became an asset to use to honor the individual.
Okay, okay. Nice job.
Thank you.
Wow.
All right, let's vote, please.
And that motion passes five to zero.
I want to thank all my colleagues for this discussion. It got more wide-ranging. I'm the blame for bringing it up and I'm a guy who doesn't even like symbols, so thank you for going through this exercise. We move next to council issues and recommendations and from Councilmember Gutierrez, we have an update on the League of California Cities Mayors and Councilmembers Academy. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. I attended the new council member academy and it was a really great experience. I also attended with Mina and we got to caucus with the other surrounding newly elected city council members. I also got to meet some of their city managers and staff. And it was just a really, a really good time being with what I've been calling my class of elected officials and talking about how we may or may not have sat in our first council meeting, if we knew how to turn on our mics. And then, of course, singing praises to our staff. During the academy, we actually got a shout-out twice. So a huge shout-out to Alex and her team. We were a, we were a city they recognized for having good community communications out on social, so that was really great. And I think being an in-person kind of face-to-face learner, it was really a great experience to take my ethics and harassment class, classes where I could actively participate and ask questions. So just a really great opportunity for learning and I'm so grateful that it was part of the onboarding, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much for the report. This is a receive and file, so is there a motion to accept this? Mayor Proton Taylor.
Let's see, we are on move 15A to accept, what am I missing? Accept the?
Receive report.
Thank you.
15A, based on the recommendations.
Based on the recommendation of staff, is there a sequel portion? No, right?
There is, but you just covered it with the recommendations.
Great, there we go. Clean tonight.
And let's vote, please.
And that motion passes five to zero.
Very good. We turn now to our city manager, Mr. Powers, for announcements and upcoming issues.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. We will be back three weeks from tonight rather than our customary two, as the council will be, many of the council will be heading out to Washington DC for our annual lobbying trip and National League of Cities Conference. When we do return on the 18th of March, we will be in the Founder's Room, which is in the Cavali Theater for our annual goals session on the 18th of March. We will be back that very next week on the 25th of March for a regular meeting in these chambers. So 18th goal setting in the Cavali Theater, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned to our next meeting on March 18th, 2025. Good night, Thousand Oaks.